Good evening and welcome to the Town of Carlisle Board of Selectmen meeting Tuesday, May 28, 2019. I'm going to read the agenda. Sometimes we take things a little out of order depending upon what our rate of completion is. We try to keep our important items at the time that they've been announced so that gives a chance for people to actually come and either tune in to the discussion or come to give their input. At 7:00 we'll have community input. 7:05 joint meeting of the Selectmen Library Trustees, one of whom I see here already, about filling a vacancy. 7:15 Timber Nook Program. I see those people setting up requesting to use a Conant property. At 7:30 Fire Department request to move the Firehorn test to 12:00 p.m. 7:45 the CETF Grant Program update. That's the Committee for Energy Task Force.
Carlisle Energy Task Force.
Sorry, California. Yes, Energy Task Force.
Carlisle.
8:00 p.m. The review approved the 2019 annual appointments. 8:30 review the Board of Selectmen liaison assignments. 9:00 the Selectmen Policy and Guideline Review, which we will have at every meeting for the near future until we get finished with this job. We'll do one or two each time. At 9:30 review the Collins Center Town Organizational Study Recommendations. 9:45 Town Administrator's Report. 9:55 the liaison reports. 10:05 minutes. 10:10 an executive session, potential land acquisition, and we will not be returning to open session after that. We hope to adjourn our executive session at 10:30. Okay, is there anybody here for community input? Okay. Is Priscilla? Christine, is Priscilla also due to work?
Dear.
Oh, Dale. Okay, so would you like to come forward and talk about? First of all, Dale, is your name Joakim or Joakim?
You can be as creative as you'd like.
Let me ask you this. How do you pronounce it?
Joakim.
Joakim. Okay, so there you go.
You can come up here.
Okay, well. So Mr. Golson has resigned because he's moving out of town. We have a vacancy on the trustees for the library and you've applied. And the trustees recommend that we appoint him. Yes? Do any board members have any questions?
I just have a quick question. What is it that you do for the Haiti projects? What types of things? What types of projects?
Mained library. I was in charge of a library project. So we actually built a library. It was about $800,000, so it's US dollars a few years ago. So I was responsible, well, for the overall project, I really mainly focused on the maker part of the library. So the part of the library that has to do with learning by building.
Maker property, yeah. Well, that's the up and coming.
Yes.
Yeah.
One great background to have, right?
Absolutely.
Being the only trustee to have actually built a library.
Great.
I would, go ahead. No, I think it's wonderful. Thank you for volunteering. And I speak several times a week with Haiti on the ham radio. I have very, very good friends down there. We enjoy it.
So before diving into building this library, I seeked input from a lot of people, one of which was a librarian here. So she wrote two pages of recommendations. That was four years ago. And so that went to the thank you in the library there.
Okay.
Is the library in Port-au-Prince?
No, it's three and a half hours away.
Okay.
A southeastern part.
Great.
It's the only major library in Haiti and it's at the level where universities want to use it, but it's in the rural area.
What other types of projects does the nonprofit do in Haiti?
So this particular non-profit?
Yes, yeah, where you're a director, right?
Yeah, so that nonprofit Haiti projects, they have three wings. One is clinical, so they have a women's clinic. And they have a women's artisana where material is bought from here to there, weaved and then sold back here, and the library. So it's three wings.
Okay. I may have a...
I moved the Board of Selectmen and the remaining members of the library.
It's a joint appointment.
Did you open your meeting?
Oh.
There's only one. There's only one member of the trustees.
No, you can't do that.
So what do we do?
There's only one, I was happy to be here.
Well, how many are there?
There's three.
Well, except that Steve has resigned.
Well, normally there are three.
Right, so normally, yes.
So it should have been two. We still would have needed two of you.
We just need a quorum.
Right.
Right.
The Selectmen are fine.
Well, so then...
We just need a quorum of the combined.
Combined.
Oh, the combined. Ah, 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 oh, okay.
I moved that the Board of Selectmen and, sorry, your name?
Christine Stevens.
Christine, sorry. Meeting with Christine, is it just, I moved that the Board of Selectmen and the library trustees vote pursuant to Master of Law, Chapter 41, Section 11, to appoint Dale Joakim of 998 Bedford Road to fill the position of trustee being vacated by Steve Golson through the May 2020 town election.
Second.
Is there any further discussion? All those in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Post abstentions? That was unanimous. Thank you and congratulations. And thank you for your service there.
So it's Joakim?
Joakim is for Joakim.
Okay, Joakim. Sorry.
Well, it's one of those names. I'm from California where, you know, the Joakim Valley. All right. Timberneck, Timber Nook Program, sorry, request to use the Conant property and it looks like you have a little presentation.
Yes. Christopher, you have the floor. All the front learners here. The full lines.
Now, I'm going to move.
All right, so...
You guys, that one to...
Hello, and thank you so much, Mr. and Mrs. for giving me an opportunity to come today. I'm here representing Timber Nook Camp. Minuteman Arc has recently acquired the franchise for Middlesex and Suffolk County, and I'm here to say why I think it should be in Carlisle. So Timber Nook is a program developed by an OT Angela Hanson, and she was the writer of Barefoot and Balanced. Her publication on why children's fidget also went viral, and she's been on TED Talks, numerous publications. Not really in for the ego, it kind of was born out of necessity. She was a woman in New Hampshire that was running a typical nature program, one of these like, you bring things home, you have 15, 20 minutes entertaining them, transitioning from archery to fishing to, you know, a full day kind of structured program. Where would you live, Meg?
Right here.
Oh, I'm sorry. Fine, I'll stand behind the desk here.
It doesn't signify, but TV, they couldn't hear you.
Understood, understood. Okay, so basically what they were finding was a lot of behavioral issues, and she was also working in the schools, and her teachers wanted to know, why are my kids falling out of their desks? Why can't they focus? What's going on? Their behaviors are out of control, they can't socialize. And I'd like to ask you guys something. If you add up, when you were a child, all the hours that you spent outside for free play or walking to school, recess after school, on average, how many hours do you think you got to spend a day just free playing outside?
Four.
And that's the average answer, is like four to six hours. So how many hours on average do you think children today spend outside free playing? Under one is really what's happening. And I'm not going to get into all the, you know, I'm a developmental specialist at Minuteman Arc as well. I've been working with kids for 20 years, but I won't get into like sensory systems and how we mature those and why we need free play as animals and adults and children. But I will say that all the research out there is really relating these trends of children falling out of their seats, unable to focus, having behavioral issues. There's a rise of ADHD, a rise of ASD, and we're relating that to this, that we're not getting enough unrestricted free play, which is how our neural pathways grow. We need at least 45 minutes. Kids are going out to recess for 20 minutes, they come back worse off than they came in. They're not allowed to regulate. So this was very born off her just making a program that fit the needs of the kids. It's a typical summer camp program. We run year-long programming as well for homeschools and field trips, birthday parties, parent-child groups. We structure it in three age groups, 18-month to four, four to seven, eight to 12. And the reason we do that, again, is when you're outside playing on the street, you had people a little bit older, a little bit younger. You're working on that, you know, leadership qualities and conflict resolution. So we have a variety of programs and kind of what we'll do, it's typically 12 kids, two adults. We'll do a little icebreaker, a typical kind of curriculum we do is called the storybook, so we'll read something like Three Little Pigs, and then we give the children the opportunity to create something of their own. What I brought were some examples of what we call loose parts. That's a small scale. There'd be things like tires, ropes, boards, duct tape, and they are allowed to basically do this with what they wish. It's an opportunity. We're not telling them directly what to do. And through our work and training together in New Hampshire, we find it's a very transformative experience. Some kids don't know, have any idea what to do. Some kids dive right in and then they kind of start socializing and doing more with each other. But regardless, the goal is to give them meaningful, authentic nature experiences where they're really organizing their bodies, organizing each other. And I was really blown away doing a lot of training with the parents, adults. I think it's hardest for us to just step back and tune in. And there's two rules in Timber Nook. It's you have to see an adult and you have to be kind to yourself, to nature, to your friends. So those are our kind of basic guiding principles, and we find that children do really have natural innate ability to resolve conflict and take manageable risks in nature, and we're really doing them a disservice by not doing that. So where Carlisle comes in, I have been working with a child, Eva Gruenowitz, for seven years now, and she is included in a typical age program. She lives with Rett syndrome. And so I already know you guys are into inclusivity. I know how, you know, nature is at the forefront of Carlisle culture. But I've also fallen in love with the Conant land. I feel like it's not really being utilized a ton when I go, and that's great and that's beautiful. But we have a dozen kids, we have a beautiful magical land that I see just enriching the children of this community. They're headed to the second top high school in the state, and they have a lot to focus on. And I think we're going to have more capable, attending, happy kids with better grades if we bring this to them. The other benefit is that we're currently working on a school program, school curriculum. The first public school actually opened, I think, in Virginia using the Timber Nook curriculum. So there's an opportunity there for them to really just walk from the school over and have a Timber Nook Day and be giving their bodies what we know as professionals they need. So what I'd like to do, just to give a quick visual, is just play 30 seconds of this video, and then I'm going to open up some quick question and answer to Eric Borish, our Director of Operations at Minuteman. But just to let you know essentially what we need, pickup drop-off location, again, kind of the perfect location over here, storm shelter and bathrooms, but it's important to note that we don't operate with inclement weather, and we operate when it snows and when it rains. So it's more a Massachusetts regulation than something in most states that they actually use. We typically bring a teepee, potty, if children need it, but we're out there, you know, from 9:00 to 12:00 or 9:00 to 2:00, so really what we need mostly is the space. But we can get more into that, and of course, Minuteman Arc is, you know, wholly owned, so they handle all liability and insurance of that, so. Everyone hear that? Timber Nook programming is very different than what you would find in a therapeutic clinic. Timber Nook was designed for all children, so it's therapeutic in nature, but it's really designed to enhance child development for children across the board. Timber Nook is a catalyst really to get children back outdoors, and it's an example, not only to the children but to the parents, on how important and critical it is for children to be outdoors, moving their bodies and playing. We empower children not by entertaining them, but by really stepping back and letting children take risks and to balance on things and to spin and to try new things. You don't have to be afraid of a campfire if you're taught. Okay, so without taking any more of your time, that's kind of just a brief little visual of what we're about. And I just wanted to give you guys just a minute if you had any questions or comments.
In the original information you had, you talked about the need for shelter in case of severe weather. Have you identified a place that you'd go if that would happen?
The number of requirements are, in the event of a lightning area or a sudden deluge of rain that is not expected, the climate, the way it is right now, it's just sometimes things come upon you very quickly. We require to have in our emergency protocols, a plan for every site, every location, what to do in the event that those things happen. So, for example, being out in a conquered wood area of trails and so forth, there is no shelter. There's no place to get kids out of danger quickly in the event that that came on. That was one of the features here, that there was a building here that they could get to quickly, there were some restrooms here that they could have access to, but that's really...
Okay, so you have identified... So the building is Town Hall?
Yeah.
The shelter is Town Hall?
Or the fire...
Or the fire station.
Really any willing place. Again, on a state level, we could qualify as a nature school, which would kind of make those camp, day camp requirements obsolete, but what we were told on the state level was that that kind of was on a town-to-town basis. So we could also qualify as...
The way the state is kind of looking at this is we're not so much a camp or a day camp, so it's actually, it's actually a classroom in which the classroom setting is the outdoors. That's kind of how they're looking at us, and that's the kind of criteria we're going to have to meet with them to start this program off.
So, I'm sorry, may I ask a question?
No, go ahead.
So I would think it would need to be Town Hall because I'm not sure all of a sudden there can be 15 kids in the fire department in case, you know, they need to go on an emergency or something like that. But I noticed that this says it's nine to four, and Town Hall is not open until four on all, it's only open until 3:30. So what would we do?
Well, routinely, there are people here until four.
So the door isn't locked?
Yeah, the building would be open.
Okay.
And we have, you know, the bathroom's here.
And is the idea that the kids, you mentioned a potty teepee, is the idea that the kids would be coming here to use the bathroom, or would they be, would it only be a bathroom here and, I don't know?
Yeah, typically...
That would be easiest. If we needed to, you know, I don't know, rent or install a portable facility, if that would be preferred to having kids coming to the building supervised, of course, then you could make sure that happens. We're hoping to help find a friendly place that's saying, you know, what...
There's some advantages to the potty teepee because there, you have to sort of cross the street from, to get here. So definitely, I understand they would be supervised to begin with, but it's just, it's not that close. You could...
To the Conant land?
Yeah, Conant's right here.
Conant's right off the back of the parking lot.
I know, but they have to go walk through the parking lot.
Oh, okay.
Across this little exit road to get in. It's not, it's not like it's right there. If they had the potty at the back of the parking lot, they don't have to walk anywhere basically. They're right there already. So I think that, you know, they might even, you might even consider that advantageous since you're not, because you're going to, kids, you know, you're going to be ferrying kids back and forth constantly otherwise, and...
The majority of the users using the teepee traditionally, like when you're in New Hampshire being trained, that's what we did, there were very rare cases where we went for also a decent walk to a quarter potty, typically a simple, their kid just doesn't, you know, we want the experience overall to be positive. So if it's going to be something that's traumatic, but again, all these would be very rare situations. Again, if we have any sort of warning of complete inclement weather, we just would be canceling the camp, so.
Yes, just two other questions.
Yeah, of course.
One is, you're a nonprofit, right? This, the Timber Nook, it's a nonprofit, this isn't a for-profit?
I'm sorry, I don't know how many of you know Minuteman Arc.
I know it very well. I just live across the street from West Street.
In 2018, we served a little over 1,000 people. The folks in Carlisle that we served the most were, went through our early intervention program from about age one to about, we had that cutoff at age three. And this is the first time that Minuteman Arc has, is rolling out a program now that opens up from age three on up.
Or any arc.
This is in agreement with Minuteman Arc, not with a different organization that's Timber Nook.
We'll have our full umbrella, insurance-wise, et cetera.
Okay.
Insurance, whatever.
And so my last question is, it says that you run, that you hope to run for five weeks during the summer, as well as some smaller programming throughout the year. How much, how many of those would there be and like how much notice? I think it would be important that we know that it's going on, just because there might be access into the Town Hall and things like that.
Yeah, we'd want to be, you know, planning that obviously months in advance. We plan in April as a cutoff for summer, and then we would probably have something before that to discuss the fall programming. It typically would be something like a parent-child group for, you know, like 9:00 to 12:00 on a Wednesday, weekly, ongoing for a session of, you know, eight to 10 weeks. Or another typical situation is homeschool children that, you know, want to be able to have some sort of peer interaction in their week. Field trips, birthday parties, and we can also do seasonal nightly programming where we just, but again, all of that is catered to the area and desire with the bulk of it being that summer programming.
Right, and that seems like a lot, but...
Yeah.
So the idea is that you would be coming up the driveway to the far end of the parking lot and doing drop-off there, and then, and you'd be doing that at 9:00, 1:00, and 4:00, for 15 kids? Well, maybe half and half or something like that?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, 12 is our, kind of our recipe, 12 to two.
And if it's something like a birthday party or something like that, how many people might be coming into the driveway and parking in the parking lot?
We keep the ratio again to 12 to two, so very rarely would there be a situation where we'd have over 12 kids. It's really important and part of the experience to be able to have like that ratio and amount.
And I guess I lag because I'm still asking questions.
Yeah.
How many cars would you think would be parked in the parking lot all day long?
Parked would just be myself and Sherry. The drop-off would be that, you know, we'd have a dozen parents coming and dropping off.
There might be occasional parent or two that want to stay and observe or whatever, but...
As maybe four.
Yeah, what if we kept it six or less, like, you know, in that area?
Right.
And we would be checking in with you to make sure that this is working for you folks as well.
Right.
And in the event that it's, some of that is getting burdensome, we'll figure out ways. We have a fleet of vans, I'm sure we've seen them around, we can figure out transport or something.
Yep.
If that...
And another loophole to those requirements is if we don't do the five weeks consecutively, we don't count as a day camp. So if we do like one week on, one week off, we can kind of skirt those regulations.
Not that we're regulations...
Yeah, yes.
Regulations are in place for a good reason, often.
Yes, yeah.
But some of them can be very rigid for something that's very small scale like this, and it can be very intimate with the kids and very kind of often just well-supervised.
And I realize that you are, you know, that Minuteman Arc would be taking the liability, but anybody who's dealing with the kids would be licensed, background checked and all that?
Yes, we are.
You know, including myself, fingerprinted and enquired every year, so we're pretty thorough about that stuff.
Yeah.
Have to be. We're regulated by the state, of course. We're in the Massachusetts Department of Public Health, Massachusetts Department of Developmental Services, CARF accreditation, people are looking over our shoulders all the time.
ADA, yeah.
You have a question, pardon?
We're pretty clean, scrubbed clean over the years, and we're proud of it. What we do, we do very well.
Hi. Great, hi. Well, I think it sounds like a really great program. I'm a former kindergarten teacher, I'm a big believer in outdoor education, so I think it's a great idea. Just a couple of questions for you. In what I'm looking at, you're talking about typical and non-typical children, so specifically thinking about a summer program on the Conant land, are you thinking you'd have, I mean, what's your plan for the numbers? And sort of a related question is if you have children with disabilities that require aids, is that adult also prepared to be there with that child? Or do you provide the staff for a child with special needs?
You would have to by law maintain staff, which is required.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, the typical setup is to have OT volunteers, and we are in connection with a few schools already through early intervention. We take OT interns, so they have a certain amount of volunteer hours they have to go for if they're going for their masters. So that's kind of the most common scenario if we were to need an aide, but we would be starting very much with children that are more, you know, ADHD, high-functioning ASD, things like that, that would be really already getting what they need in the programming and not needing aids.
Okay.
That would be something, obviously inclusivity is at the core of what we do, but it would be something we would...
Open to all, obviously, but...
So what happens, a parent or a caretaker who has a child that's interested in this, they submit an application to you?
Mm-hmm.
And then, and so have you, it's now what, almost June 1st? When are you thinking of running the program here at Conant, or the first week, let's say?
Our first goal would be to start, you know, in the fall, end of September, for an eight-week session.
Oh, so not this summer?
No, ma'am, no.
Oh, well, okay.
Because we missed, the cutoff has already kind of passed for this summer.
Passed, okay.
So we're looking to start in the fall.
Okay, so what would be...
Start out slow and...
Got it, so it would be something like you were describing, an eight-week, once-a-week parent-child session or, okay. And so would you then just come back to us at a certain point at the end of the summer to say, here's the plan, here are the dates?
We'd have a working proposal that would, kind of, we'd check in with.
Okay.
Just, again, based on the need and how things grow. We do attract a lot of word of mouth already. Angela came and spoke at the Beth Israel Congregation in Acton. I'm keeping a Mail Chip running with, you know, at least 50 people that are interested right now, but again, these programs sell out fast.
Yeah, I would think so.
I mean, the families want it and need it, so we would be able to be a little bit kind of exclusive at least to start as we try to build programming up.
So our approval today, tonight, would be for a program to be run this fall?
Yes, ma'am.
And it would include sort of a second phase of coming back to a Board of Selectmen meeting to present what you're actually planning to do?
Absolutely.
Would that be the idea?
Absolutely.
So I think this motion is actually not correct in our book, so...
Are you going to...
Yes, okay, so somebody want to give a shot?
Can I, can I...
Yeah, absolutely.
So just a couple of different things. In the video, which I'm fully supportive of this, I have two boys who I wish they would get out more. And they're out a lot, but they can always use more.
Yeah.
Just in the video, you had like rope ladders and those walk things. So does that stuff stay set up over the, you know, so, I mean, if it's a once-a-week thing, I'm assuming you'd probably break it down and take it with you, but over the summer, does it stay set up on the property?
Those things, the kids actually mostly created themselves during that camp, so if it's a week-long camp... if it's a week-long camp, it stays up for that, like, week as they're creating it. Again, there, there are, it's an international program, so there's a lot of variations, right, depending on the land. So that's another thing we're definitely flexible with. Ideally, we would be able to have like one or two built-in things. Some are already there, like they have a little step stone across the brook. There's a lot of built-in rock formations that are really already great. So again, that would definitely be up to discussion, but ideally, we would be able to have at least like, you know, just a swing or a climbing structure that might be able to stay up. The actual goal in the curriculum is for the children to make those things themselves. And everything you saw in the video was made by the children.
Yeah.
And.
Which is fantastic, yeah.
We would have some ownership about making sure that it was returned to.
Yeah.
The original condition when that week was over.
Yeah. We leave no trace.
What would worry us much more is somebody else happening on it.
Well, that's just, yeah, so on public land, I mean, do you, you know, I mean, I, I would think and I would hope, you know, most Carlileans would respect it and just leave it as is, you know, especially if you have a little sign or something. But is there ever an issue on, on public land? Or do you usually use, use public land or private land?
Municipal land is a great, kind of a popular option. But I, I don't think it is an issue, because the things that we're making inherently aren't less or more safe than climbing on a rock or a tree.
Oh, yeah, no, no, no.
So if people want to use it, then that, I think is just enriching the space, yeah.
All right, yeah, no, that's fine. I just, yeah, it's more so that I wouldn't want people to go in and mess it up. But also too, just, yeah, if, if you've ever had, you know, that sort of thing where people, or somebody removes it or.
My opinion is safety. So with Minuteman Arc, so I'm always looking at those issues. So we would have some discussion, make sure that when they're walking away from the city, they're leaving a safe situation.
Yeah.
It's not likely to cause somebody some harm that happened to go in there, right?
Oh, yeah, no, it's, it's more so even just signage, you know, just to say, Minuteman Arc Project, Timbernook, blah, blah, blah. Just so when people walk, Tim doesn't get a call, hey, there's this out in the woods or that out in the woods or.
Right.
You know, yeah.
Okay.
And what a great opportunity for problem-solving when we come there in the morning and I stop something tampered with.
And it's gone.
Yeah.
That's life.
This is, this is general municipal land, Conant, right? It's not conservation land?
Yeah.
Correct, yeah.
Municipal land, yeah.
Right. So unless there's any other discussion, I've got to, I'll make a motion, see if this works for you.
Still have more discussion.
Oh, okay, see if this works for you, Sherry. If we said something like, I move that the Board of Selectmen authorize the use of Conant property for Sept, beginning September 1, 2019, through and including, what do you want for your end date in the fall?
December, or November 1st would be fine.
November 1st, okay. So September 1 to November 1, 2019, subject to a certificate of general liability showing proper insurance coverage and naming the town of Carlisle as an additional insured.
Let me ask, let me ask a question, just, just a practicality question for your group. If this ends November 1st, does that mean, when is your next program?
I think the goal would be to, we would stagger a seven-week session, seven, you know, week session or seven, six, have maybe one or two nightly programs, and just have that for the three months, and then convene in December with you all to discuss what's going to happen for 2020 and what you guys feel comfortable with.
You don't do it over.
This would be like a pilot.
I'm just worried, I'm just worried that, you know, if we cut off, you're going to miss a whole session if we.
Yeah. So let's think that through a little bit. Would, is it, given that this is sort of starting off here in September, provided there weren't any problems, would you folks be okay with us going ahead somewhere in the middle there about planning some kind of a, of a winter program? And if there were problems, could you call us into an appropriate meeting and we will work those problem, problems out, or if necessary, in the meeting or, or by phone or however. But we would certainly be checking in with the town to make sure that this is working.
Like a trial run.
I'd be more inclined to approve it for.
Longer period.
For the two, the two sessions.
That would be ideal.
Saying that you still need to come and talk to us and learn, but just so that there's no disruption.
Yeah, that would, that would be really helpful.
Because sometimes it's.
Build some continuity.
Right.
Getting this sort of off the ground and then just, just making sure our lines of communication are aligned.
So would you want to end at, say, I don't know, March 30th or?
Yeah. That would be perfect, and we can reconvene about summer. Or do you want to do it?
If we can come to you longer before.
Yeah, absolutely.
That's what I'm thinking, you've come in in December.
I think that has to be part of the, the motion.
It'd be an early December review.
Absolutely.
Okay.
Or even, it's September, right?
That's true.
Like an October review?
Yeah.
Because we're, you know.
We may, we may know fairly soon whether this really works.
And we'll, and we'll be hearing from town staff is, you know, whether or not there's an issue on our side.
Absolutely.
All right, shall we try that again?
Try that again?
Okay. I move that the Board of Selectmen authorize the use of Conant property for the period September 1, 2019, through March 31, 2020, for the Timbernook sensory nature programs, subject to a certificate of general liability showing proper insurance coverage and naming the town of Carlisle as an additional insured, and including the provision that there be a review in the fall of 2019.
Yes.
At the conclusion of the first session.
Yes.
Second.
There we go. Is there any further discussion or questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Closed? Good luck.
Thank you. That'd be a great program.
Yes.
Thank you so much.
Yeah.
Thank you. 7:30. You want to take your brochures?
I will take it all.
Yes. Because, thank you. Do you want to keep any of these, anybody?
We're going to keep.
Keep one.
Yeah, okay. Fire department request to move the fire horn test back to 12 o'clock. And I see Chief Soros and Burt will come forward.
Chief and the deputy chief.
Okay. We don't have anything in there.
We have the big guns.
Yes.
He could be going to their own home.
Hello.
Interesting day to choose to talk about noise and fire.
What happened?
Oh, they've been chipping out the.
Oh.
They've taken out the pedestal.
Yes. Okay, so. You have requested to move the fire horn back from 5:00 to noon. Can you tell us what the rationale and thinking behind that is?
Move the noon test back to noon. So I wasn't involved in any of the parts of moving it to the 5:00. Kind of the data points I'm, I'm working with and that I know about, having a test is a factor in my, in ISO rating for insurance rates and all. We reduced the use of the horn a whole lot. We moved it to 5:00 because we had an individual living, and we moved it to 5:00 because we had an individual living near the, the station who claimed it interrupted their sleep schedule. So since then, that person has moved away from the address. And I will say, kind of without any prompting, I don't go around asking people questions, but I've had dozens of people in Carlisle approach me to say they want the, the horn moved back to noon. They did that when we moved it to 5:00. They moved it when the chief moved it back to noon. They have come up to me and said the same thing when we moved it back to 5:00. After their self침ament request to remove it. So, and also actually, there were people, when you had the meeting to choose the fire chief, there were people who chose, came to that meeting because they thought that a topic was, that was part of the meeting was going to be to discuss the moving the horn back to noon. They could care less who the chief was, but they do want that horn to noon. So, you know, this is, this is what I.
Wait, so we don't need a chief? We just need a horn.
So, I mean, for that matter, I've actually had a few people relate that they're disappointed we don't, we reduce the use of the horn and we don't blow all outs like we used to. I've had one person say, oh, I've kind of gotten used to it at 5:00 and that seems, you know, they'd be happy if it remained at 5:00. But overwhelmingly, when people come to me, this is what they say. So, you know, we wanted it noon because of, partially because of that, also because of tradition, right? So it's, it's tradition and fire departments, you know, you have a call department largely because of, of people wanting to maintain tradition. Also, it's a time when we are there, and so we'll notice that there's, you know, the idea of a test is you notice when there's problems, when we're physically in the building is when, is the best time to do that and when we're, we're expecting it. So that was everything I knew about when we put this on the agenda. Since then, I appreciate that Vanessa contacted me to let me know she's working on generating support for moving the horn back to 5:00, or leaving it at 5:00. That was not something I, was part of my radar going into this. So, I mean, I think, we try to be good citizens in the center of town. You know, we don't run our sirens like you would most places. We try to, to be good neighbors. But the tradition of the noon horn is something that goes back 80 years, and it's something that, you know, we should have some respect for that, as well as the fact that, my understanding of many people in town is that they'd rather have it at noon.
All times are arbitrary, other than between maybe 8:00 PM and 6:00 AM, people don't want it, but are arbitrary, but the tradition, not only here but in many places, to do noon test. In fact, we called it, didn't want to bias too much, but it was the noon horn test. That's now at 5:00 PM. It still says noon horn tested 5:00 PM. We did check with the people that moved in and replaced the person who had the flipped schedule, and she said, well, I have to, disclosure, she's a member of the fire department now. So she had no problem with it, and they're directly across the street. Other than town hall, they're, they're the only other ones that would be directly impacted.
Town hall pretty much gets the full.
Yeah, because we're at the same, the horn is at the level of the second floor here.
It wakes them up.
Increases productivity. Should blow every hour out of them.
Between that and jackhammering.
That may be, that as it may be, there was also a process to get it moved to 5:00. I understand there were public hearings, and there was a vote, and there were, were some sort of, you know.
I don't think there was, but there was a single meeting where Chief Flannery showed up, heard the request from the person living at 71 or 75 Westford Street, and at the same time, as Chief Soros said, said there's other places where we can reduce the use of the horn, like no all-outs between 11:00 and 7:00 AM and so on. But that was a single meeting. Chief Flannery, in fact, didn't even know that it was a vote, other than a discussion. I did go back through the mosquito and found that, at least the mosquito reported that it was voted by the selectmen to move the horn till 5:00 PM. But there was no public hearing, other than that one selectmen's meeting.
Okay. Anybody have questions, comments, concerns?
I'm surprised it's a Board of Selectmen decision. I mean, you are a strong chief, right?
You know, David Flannery did not remember it as being a decision of the board. That it was his understanding that was his decision, and once the person moved out, that was why he made the decision, the decision to move it back to noon.
Yeah.
Yeah, you've reported that you've had a lot of people that said they wanted it moved, but then I also have a report that shows that there's a lot of people who don't want it moved. So I don't know how we.
Is that the survey?
The survey.
Parents' connection?
Yes.
Two things, other than it being very non-scientific and a, there's a letter saying, here's why we moved it. But the interesting thing, which I guess maybe is being overly honest, is there's three responses, one of which says, keep it at 5:00, one of which says, don't have horns at all, and the third of which says, keep it at noon. And then it has a certain number of likes, which is not a very.
Yeah, well, there was one, I like the fire horn the way it is now. 64 votes. I don't have.
Not 64 votes, 64 likes.
Like, well, it's a vote, it's a vote.
Was it a vote?
I don't have a strong opinion, but wanted to vote present. That was 11 votes. I didn't want the fire horn to blow at all. Why do we even have it? Six votes. I'd rather it went back to a test at noon. Four votes. So I'd say, according to the parents of the town, I would say there was consensus that nap times are impacted by a noon horn.
So we won't have nothing to admit about it. Did you read the question?
The way that it was worded?
It says, I like the fire horn the way it is now with a test at 5:00.
That's, yeah. No, the question was.
No, the question was kind of an explanation of why it's at 5:00 and all the positives of it being at 5:00. And it said, basically, do you agree? As opposed to, you know, here are two choices, noon or 5:00, which would you prefer?
I haven't saw this, because I'm a.
We don't see that on here.
Okay, that was, yeah, that was a paragraph and a half of.
I mean, if, if it was my experience that that was the consensus of the town, I think we, I'd be saying something different. But that has not been my experience.
Here we go.
How often does the horn?
I have an opinion, sure.
Yeah, okay, well.
I like it at noon.
Oh, you like it at noon, okay.
How, how often does, may I?
Yeah, go ahead.
How often does the horn fail? I'm just thinking about the, the, the point that you made about you're, you're there so you'll know if it will fail.
Right.
It tends to be weather-related and, and really wet, cold weather. It's usually when we have the problem. The other time is when we've turned it off and forgotten to turn it back on. Repair, if somebody's working on the roof, he turned the horn off, so.
You guys are too kind.
When we're doing testing of the circuit or something like that, we'll turn it off so that we don't have pulse.
But if, but if you're there and it's weather-related and it, or it's a day like today and it doesn't go off, do you take action if it doesn't go off? Or you just wait until the next day to see if it dries up?
There are things we can do if, if we're sending air that has too much water in it. So we have water separators, and if those have gotten saturated and we need to drain them, we can drain them.
So you can't actually just fix it right there on the spot?
Once it has frozen, it probably needs to warm up. We're not going to get up there with blowtorches, probably.
Certainly not, because the horn may go off.
Right. But a, a part of that is that at least we know that we have an issue with it.
The horn itself is not a, just a tradition. It's actually, both are backup. If there was an issue with dispatch, for whatever reason, that could not get signal out to trip the pagers, then we would hear the horn. And the other is for a good number of the firefighters, we hear the horn. The horn will go off very often before dis, if it's a building, whatever, it'll go off before the dispatcher. So many of us are in our cars driving before our pager tones go off, other than at either 5:00 or noon.
Okay. And just to clarify, I do think that we had two meetings about this. One meeting was kind of a presentation of the issue. And I know that David Freeman was also very involved in this. Vanessa was the chair at the time. And so there, there was the one meeting where it kind of came up as an issue and we had the discussion. And then the following meeting was when we talked about, okay, actually, it may have actually been three meetings, but we talked about, you know, can you cut back on the number of times? You know, personally, I was supportive of getting rid of the all-call, but kind of disappointed that we were no longer broadcasting, that school was canceled.
Yeah.
And, and then that, and then I think that the following meeting was, okay, you know, and, and it was actually my recollection that we, we asked Chief Fisher to change it. It'd be interesting to see the minutes. But that it, you know, I, it was my impression that it was in agreement, but maybe we did vote on it as, you know, I mean, that was, seems like it was like 20 years ago now.
It was 2015.
That's close to 20 years ago.
But you mean Chief David Flannery, not Fisher?
Yes.
Okay.
Oh, I'm sorry, yes.
Okay.
You could have asked Chief Fisher.
We could have.
Well, I guess I'm wondering, is the, is what you're trying to determine, how many people in town favorite at one time or another? Or are you asking for our approval to have it at noon again? What?
So what we, what, the reason this went on. So, what we, the reason this went on the agenda was for us because, to discuss moving it back to noon, or to have you agree to move it back to noon. Because at the time we did that, our understanding was everybody, and many of, most of the people living in the center want that, as well as we do. So, we have a desire, we thought everybody else did. Since then, there is some more information that clouds that up a little bit. But that was what, the agenda item was to decide to move it back to noon. And, and again, you know, we weren't trying to be bad neighbors by doing things people didn't want, but that was our understanding of, a desire of both the town and us.
I mean, having voted to move it, you know, my vote was to move it because there was an individual's, you know, we were doing it for an individual citizen, in my opinion. And that's why I was doing it. You know, so, I personally don't have any problem with it moving back to noon. And I do wonder whether or not it's actually our purview.
I'm sorry, you wonder enough, what?
Whether or not it's actually our purview as to what time it goes off, but I think it's, you know, it's good that we're doing this collaboratively.
Kate, you have some people in the audience.
Yes.
Can we get a comment from the audience?
Yeah, I think Vanessa?
Amy, hand her hand up.
Oh, okay.
No, I'm just.
Come to the.
Hi, Vanessa Maroni, Bedford Room. So, yeah, Amy and I would have a chance to talk. So, I think, so obviously, yeah, it does seem like a million years ago, Nathan, that we dealt with this. And it is a horn, and it feels really silly to be dealing with something about a time change, you know, of five and noon. I would say that for me, it's a precedent-setting sort of thing. I feel like it was a really good, it was one of the actual functional meetings, like wins that we had as a town between the fire department and the board of selectmen, or just the board of selectmen in general, because at that time, the board of selectmen wasn't such a cohesive group. It was pretty awful. And we had, a concerned citizen came in, a lot of, and it wasn't just about her, you know, third shift, you know, job as a physician, and marines and physicians for children. It wasn't just that. But it was, it was, at that same time, we were dealing with a lot of noise issues. That's when the noise bylaw was being worked on, which this wasn't part of that, but that was, you know, there was a lot about noise that was being discussed. And Amy had mentioned that, you know, inside her house over there, which she still owns, it's over 100 decibels inside the house when it blows. So, we were like, part of this whole thing about the reduction of time and all of this, you know, that David Flannery came up with these solutions to try to reduce and minimize, yet still keep the horn, because we knew, like, it, nobody was saying anything that the horn wasn't needed to test, you know, like that everybody went in tonight. David Friedman was in here for a while, it definitely was at least two meetings. And like you said, where David Flannery was bringing to us the different suggestions about, you know, what could be solutions. And it just was such a great consensus of still keeping what the fire department needed in terms of a test for the technology, but also doing something that would help the general public. And that we also saw that it was also a benefit to other parents in, in the center of town or elsewhere, that saying like, "It's 5:00 o'clock, it's time for kids to go home, and it's time for dinner to get ready." It just seemed like there was a lot of positivity around it. So, I was really surprised and disheartened after having spent a lot of time on this issue. And as, you know, volunteers, where you all spend your time, and also Chief Flannery as the chief, and now, you know, Brian Saros is chief, spending their paid time dealing with this issue, it's already been dealt with. It was already something that was a positive move that, you know, we, we did, and there hasn't been any problem since then. So, I have a hard time understanding, first of all, that it was upsetting that it seemed like right after Chief Flannery left, you know, once he retired, it immediately went back to noon. And that's when I was like, "What?" Because I rely on it. A lot of parents rely on this 5:00 thing, and all of a sudden, they're like, "Right after the New Year, you start hearing it at noon." And so, I asked about it and was told that it was just change. I mean, I don't know what the, if that was coincidental timing or whatever. And the poll that I, that I put out, which I forwarded to everybody, including the copy for the very biased poll, was because I do feel like a lot of time was put into it, and that for, for, and I can't recall specifically, I think it was a vote, but, but at the same time, it's like, it was an agreement, and something that was put into place. And it's like, you know, I know the whole strong chief, you know, weak chief kind of thing, Chief Fisher probably thinks that's charming. It would be great to have equal chiefs. But I find it disheartening as a citizen that something that came together as a cohesive group effort can just be disbanded just like that with one decision, and without any input from anybody else. I found that to be really disrespectful, basically, of the process. So, you know, it's a fire horn, it's a daily test. But I feel like we've been through this. I mean, do we want the board of selectmen to be spending their time on things like this over and over again? And in terms of the, the historical aspect of it, you know, we went through that a lot. I mean, that was part of the discussion, you know, hugely. There are a lot of people who are very sentimental about it, and I understand. At the same time, you know, Carlisle is a dry town. Are we just going to decide that firms can't sell alcohol anymore, like, just like that? Because, you know, some people decide that, I mean, I'm just using that as like a crazy thing to pull out of the air, but it's, it speaks to, they are related in certain ways. And I just feel like I'm disappointed in the way that this is going about. I feel like in terms of, you know, people coming up and talking about the fire horn, I feel like more people need to be heard. I feel like a lot of parents, you know, it's hard for people to get to town meeting even. Nobody comes to meetings like this either, it's pretty, pretty rare. But again, I feel like the most important thing is the, is the precedent for me. And I feel like it has been dealt with. I feel like there's been, I don't think there's been anything detrimental about it. And I think we have other things to work on.
May I respond? I just, yeah, I would just like to respond, because I was the chair last year. And so, I understand what you're saying, but I think that a lot of what you were saying is disrespectful and was outside of process and everything. We dealt with right away, as soon as that was pointed out. So, let's not keep bringing that up. We, you know, we, you know, we found out the horn was moved, you know, you and I talked. It was like, the next week, the horn was back to 5:00 o'clock. I chatted with Bert, and Bert, boom, he put it right back. So, I don't think it was a disrespectful thing. I think that there was a decision to move the horn back, you know, rightfully or wrongfully, but that decision was undone right away. So, I don't think that's a fair depiction of what, of what happens. So, I think.
Just from an outsider's point of not being involved with any decision and just hearing it, it sounded.
Right, but that's often what happens in town government, right? You know, there's, there's things that happen, you know, that a lot of people are working on, and everybody doesn't know about it. And we do try to correct things as, as quickly as we can. So, I think that's, that's all water under the bridge. You know, the, the decision right now is, are we moving it back, or are we keeping it at 5:00 o'clock? And, you know, you know, during those meetings, I'll say that, you know, there, you know, I voted to move it, right? If we did vote, I certainly was supportive of whatever it was. But there were a lot of people who were here who did not want it moved. And we moved it anyway because we thought it was the right thing to do. And, and I still think it was the right thing to do then. I think the question is, now, do we move it back?
Yeah. Okay, thank you. Could you keep your comments short?
Amy, well, I'll keep it short. I'm that tired person, and I like to think that this whole thing happened because of me, but it didn't. Like, yes, I had sort of started that movement because it genuinely is 100 decibels inside the house. I, yes, I was working night shifts. Yes, I was unable to sleep because it is heart-stopping to be woken from sleep by that sound. That being said, like we were saying before, the, the conversation was not about whether I could sleep or not. It was about what was best for the town and the over 11 children who live in the center of town. And as the town shifts and it moves, there are also younger families, babies, moving into the center of town. And this is not a slight matter. Even the city of Boston has a 50-decibel limit on, on noise in the city. And this is twice that inside our houses. And so, this is sort of where the conversation came from. I was so grateful at the time that everyone was really listening to the pros and cons. And to be honest, everyone at the table, from what I remember, had agreed that it would be best not to have it at all, but we wanted to make sure for safety's sake, that because the cell service interruptions put communication at risk, nobody wanted communication to affect, negatively impact any citizens of this town. So, the question that I have actually at this point in time is, where are we at with this cell tower? And when do we begin the conversation again about whether this very historic, but also invasive and antiquated communication system could potentially convert over to a very secure method of communication via this new cell tower that the town is spending lots and lots of money on? And I'm curious to know how this impacts everybody's new conversation about this older topic.
Just a quick note, it's not just for the fire department, it's also the backup. Now, we have the reverse 911 through Blackboard, very reliable, but not 100% reliable that we get out. In case of something like a tornado or whatever, then we're going to be blasting that horn. We just can't, we can't say, we hope that in a timely manner, 1,770 or whatever the number of reverse 911 calls go out, to serve that purpose also for public safety, in addition to the fire department's town ads.
So, is there, besides tradition, is there a compelling reason to move it to noon?
Is there a compelling, I mean, is there a compelling reason why, you know, I hear the children in 5:00 PM.
I don't know, no, I'm talking about the fire department's reason for moving it to noon. What is the compelling reason to do that?
The most compelling reason is, is that we are there and we are noticing it at that time at 5:00 o'clock. We sometimes notice it, and sometimes we don't.
At, at 5:00 o'clock, you sometimes don't notice it?
The station, someone may not be at the station. Pretty much at noon, someone's going to be there at 5:00, it's iffy.
The same reason, like our generator. We test our generator every week on Wednesday night at 7:30 PM. Why? Because Wednesday nights at 7:00 o'clock, we do training. So, we're sitting there in the room, and we hear it turn on.
Well, what if we moved it to 7:00 then, on Wednesday? I mean, I'm just, I'm just saying, I mean, what's the.
It's a daily thing, not a weekly.
Well, that's true, it's not.
I suspect you'd get other.
Yes, you would, probably would, okay.
But.
But it's not a, an overly compelling.
I'll call you when I don't hear it at 5:00, because I, I hear it from my house at 5:00. Okay, I, I just wanted to know, beyond tradition, if there was, and that actually is a good reason. I'm just.
But it's not.
All right.
You know, again, if, if there was no real, strong public understanding of people in the center, that was one way or the other, but that would be obviously more.
Can I just ask a question? Do you want to, do you want to have this be on a future meeting while you figure out more what the?
So, so the idea would be that we do a.
Well, it just sounds like that you found out information just before you came in here.
Well, end of last week, yes.
Okay, so, all right, so it's not as.
I have not gone door to door.
Well, I have to, I have to say, one is documented, the other one isn't, you know.
It's not really a valid survey, though.
It's not a terribly valid survey, but then what, you know.
It's not valid at all.
No. Yeah.
I'm a scientist, I don't do valid surveys. It's not a valid survey.
I mean, I, we have a strong chief for a reason. Christ, he can make financial decisions, he can't make the decision about a horn. You know, I mean, I, you know, it's just, it's one of, if we're a true public health issue or something, then yes, you know, then I can see, you know, doing a, you know, more process, more study. But, you know, I mean, we entitled Brian to make a number of decisions.
Let's finish this discussion, then.
Yeah, and I think that should be one that he should make, so.
Although, do we know that it's not a public health issue? If the decibel level is.
I'm not really arguing that it is.
But I don't think that moving the horn is going to fix that.
Doesn't change that. It's a public issue at noon or.
We have to revisit.
Right, I just think that's a completely different topic that's not on the.
Right, no, exactly, exactly, yeah.
Okay.
And it's just something we should talk about. Should it be 12, or should it be 5?
Yes, let's move the question.
I would, I would move that the request to move the horn to 12:00 o'clock be approved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any further discussion?
We want to change that, that it is to the purview of the fire chief when the fire horn blows? Otherwise, you're making the decision that we will move it back to noon, and we will do that, you know.
Well, that's not, yeah.
That's a different motion.
Different motion.
And I, that's not the motion, that's at the table.
Okay?
Yeah. We have the agenda calls for this one, unfortunately.
Yes.
We can have a different one next month.
Appreciate it.
Right, okay. Yeah. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Staying?
I'm going to say no on this one.
That's an opposed, then?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
Thank you.
All right.
So, be aware that tomorrow at noon, the horn probably.
They won't notice it, though, because all the jackhammering.
That's true.
They won't hear with the jackhammer. Well, yeah, I used to live next to the one in Rockport. Does that still blow? I mean, we've moved, but.
When did you move?
Catch up a little bit here.
11 years ago.
Yeah, I haven't heard it in 20 years that I was last. All right. The C-Energy Task Force, it looks like is all ready to go.
As soon as we get a cable so you can see the talk here.
Now, this, this flashing behind, the reflection of the thing is very irritating. What am I seeing?
You mean Nathan's reflection?
No, no, the, the, there's something that's flashing on the, on the screen.
Please don't be flashing, oh.
We got a flasher in our midst.
Oh, we need to move to see this.
If you move into my view, Nathan, Nathan, if you move into my view, then I'm going to see down at the other end of the table, you're just not.
I'm Bob Zug, Chair of the Carlisle Energy Task Force, and we have Bill Rissow here as well, and also, I guess Jonathan DeCock might be able to help with any questions. I'll try to go through this package very quickly, because we're slated for 15 minutes, but obviously, happy to answer any questions, and there's more supporting information in the package. Want to talk a little bit about our accomplishments over the last year, what we see as our challenges for next year. Briefly mention our new mission statement that you approved in last November, update on green communities, and then talk about some new stuff here we've been doing, looking at the town-wide greenhouse gas emissions estimates, and what some possibilities might be if we want to set goals on emissions. And we'll finish up with that. So, what have we been doing? As you know, one of our big accomplishments was the municipal solar. Unfortunately, it looks not very promising for the transfer station right now, but as far as we know, still looks good for the public schools, Carlisle Public Schools. We've expanded the solar overlay, negotiated long-term lease. And so, that was a really great accomplishment, and Jonathan's done a lot of work on that, along with Bob Clark. We also are nearing completion on our Green Communities Grant Program for this year, $172,000 in grant money. There's an update on the project-specific stuff in the back of the handout. And we've concluded our Heat Smart Program that was, and we were teamed with Concord and Lincoln, and just in Carlisle alone, we had 18 clean heating and cooling systems installed. And as I mentioned earlier, we've also drafted our first estimate of our town-wide carbon I think our biggest challenge going forward is the fact that we've got four seasoned members who are leaving. who are leaving the Energy Task Force out of seven, so three are continuing. And Jonathan has offered to become a new member, and we've submitted his name as a recommendation, as a candidate to you. We're certainly talking to other people and hoping we'll get more people, but that would put us at four, and it would certainly be nice to get a few more. In November, we expanded our mission statement quite a bit. We'll talk briefly about that. And now that we're underway in the new master plan process, we want to make sure we provide all the support that's needed for that. I won't go into the details in the mission statement, but let's just say it's quite a bit more than our traditional green communities activities, and takes a much more holistic look at the entire town rather than focusing on municipal alone. But let's talk about green communities since that's been our core activity for many years, and Bill has been really doing the lion's share of the work lately on making sure we get our projects finished up. Based on our start back, and I think our first grant was in 2011, we've reduced our greenhouse gas emissions by about 26% at the municipal level, okay? And greenhouse gas emissions is not the metric that the Department of Energy Resources is using, but I'm using it here because it's probably the one that really counts in the end. We don't know yet, we've got some questions about some numbers we're entering into the database, but we may be at or close to the level needed, i.e. the 20% energy reduction improvement needed to be eligible for a wider level of funding in the future. So stay tuned on that. We're still trying to work out some anomalies in the system, and we need to get the DOER to bless that. Although it's still not gotten through the legislature yet, we've got the, there's a program being proposed called Green Plus Communities that's really going to help towns get beyond the municipal level and look at townwide reductions, and in this case, they will focus on greenhouse gas reductions. So this could be a program really, you know, targeted the whole community. So over the course of our green communities involvement, between the grant money and the incentives from utilities, we've gotten almost $800,000 of investment into the community. And that's resulted in a benefit of over $400,000 in cost savings to the town, and will continue to save over $120,000 a year for the life of those measures because of that investment.
So, sorry, real quick, the black boxes are annual savings?
Yeah.
So the black boxes are the annual numbers, and the red are the cumulative.
Oh, gotcha, okay.
So we're starting to make some transitions in how we manage our green communities relationship. We'd like to continue that transition, but it does depend on, you know, Town Hall being able to support this. Our recommendation is that we continue to transition some of the management and both on the relationship side with the DOER to Town Hall and also on the management of the data entry into the MEI system, which is the system we use for recording our energy use. And it's a great tool, but it is complicated, and it takes a lot of training to use it correctly. And we've recently discovered we were doing some things not quite right, which is why we're in question about whether we've met our 20% bogey yet. And, you know, again, it makes sense for Town Hall to be the primary point of contact and help coordinate grant applications and some of the reporting that we have to do quarterly and annually. Obviously, the task force wants to continue to support the effort to manage projects, to propose projects, to prepare, help prepare status reports and all that. But doing this, taking on a little bit more here, will really help free us up to do some of the other things that our new mission statement is asking us to do. We also think there's more room, and we'll certainly do some work on this ourselves, to coordinate with Municipal Facilities Committee and with our new facilities manager to make sure when we're making decisions, like the upgrades to the police station, for example, what have we looked at? You know, this is a great opportunity to make energy efficiency improvements, but we don't know that that's even being looked at yet. And I think there's a lot more we could do with our website and just communicating to the town in general to let people know what we've done, not because we want to brag, but because people need to know about these things, and there's a lot of information they can learn from what we're doing, and that may encourage them to support further activities in the future. So let's flip quickly to emissions. We established a small subcommittee in the Energy Task Force, it's primarily Debbie Bentley and me. We've developed our first townwide estimate of emissions for Carlisle. We've established a couple of potential options for goals if the community chooses to set emissions goals, and we've outlined a conceptual pathway to get there. This is in a draft report, it's pretty extensive and detailed, and, but it hasn't really been reviewed and vetted by a very wide audience at this point. We're also coordinating closely with the Master Plan Steering Committee to make sure that when we're, when they are talking to the community, that we get the information we need to understand what level of community support would be behind setting goals for There's a lot more data available, but just a quick snapshot at the townwide level, we're about 46,000 metric tons per year of greenhouse gas emissions. This is primarily direct emissions only. In other words, it does not include the embedded emissions associated with all the goods and services we purchase and use. So this is stuff we're pretty much directly releasing. 90% of it is residential. About 3% is municipal. So we've been focusing since 2011 on that 3%, okay? Waste incineration, I put that as a separate wedge, but that is just an estimate of the emissions associated with burning our trash, that one thing alone. This hasn't even been considered before when we're talking about pay-as-you-throw and those types of programs, we weren't even considering the emissions associated with burning all that trash. Agriculture and institutional, these are very rough numbers, but they're, they're small enough that is not going to change the big picture. So this is for 2017. Now, as you know, in 2018, we switched over to a Community Choice Power Supply Program where most town residents switched to renewable electricity as purchased through national renewable energy certificates. That itself took 14% off the total town emissions. Now, future steps won't be that easy. Just briefly, what are the options if we do choose to set goals? The two primary options are really to align with the state goals and the Global Warming Solutions Act of 2008, or to align with the more recent IPCC report in 2018, which says actually we have to do a little bit better to keep global warming down to 1.5 centigrade. So these amount to a 5% annual reduction or 10% annual reduction between now and 2050. Obviously, we have the, you know, we have the option of not setting goals. So next steps, we need to get some vetting of this draft report, we need to work with the Master Plan Steering Committee, and again, depending on the community input, if we get the green light, we'll go to work and try to refine this a little bit and set in place what's the right, what are the right goals to set and how would we get there and what resources would be needed. So again, this is hypothetical, but if the community is behind this and wants to set goals and work towards reducing our carbon footprint, it is going to mean some really fundamental changes in Town Hall. We're going to need a lot of support, but even more importantly, it's just going to be culture change because carbon will have to be at the center of every decision we make, it's rather than something we think about after, after the fact. So it is a change for people. And we'll want to, we'll want to track it carefully and post the results so the community can keep up with what's going on. So in summary, there's growing opportunities to leverage the Green Community Program and perhaps other programs, and again, depending on the sentiments of the community, we may be in a position where we can serve as a model small community in how we go about setting goals and pursuing them in terms of carbon emissions. So that's it. I'm happy to address any questions.
With regard to the heat pump program, or whatever it was called? HeatSmart? Yeah, how did we do, yeah, how did we do in relation to Concord and Lincoln, proportionally?
So just off the top of my head, we had 18 units in the overall program, let's say, have to add them up. We had, with the three towns, we had 49 air-source heat pumps, and I think just over 20, 22 or 23 ground-source heat pumps, and then we had one modern wood heating system.
Somebody did that.
Which went into Carlisle.
Really? Somebody did that, wouldn't one with the...
We did that, yeah.
Really? Do they like it? Because that was one that we all kind of joked about it. We're all, but they...
Yeah, no, it's serious. Yeah, we didn't get a lot of traction with it, but, yeah.
Excellent. No, that's great, that's great.
And the effort continues. We're, in fact, we're going to have an event on June 8. We, this is the volunteers who worked on HeatSmart in the three towns, are having an event on June 8 at the high school to keep the educational programs going and hopefully keep the momentum.
Yeah, great.
Yes.
You talked about transitioning some of the support to Town Hall, whoever that is.
Yeah.
And there may be other potential ways to handle that same sort of a thing, and frankly, I'm supportive of offloading the task force and a lot of that, some ways for some of that work, because it needs to be ongoing, it needs to be professional, and has the potential for having long-term benefits to the town. And I think it's something the town can, ought to get behind and support the tremendous efforts you've made in making us more energy efficient and reducing our footprint. I think we ought to actively explore how we do that. It was one thing to talk about it as a generality, but we have to talk specifics, and there may be, you know, internships and things like that that we can leverage to get that kind of support that we need without it costing a huge amount to the town. But I think it's something that we should not ignore. I think it's an important aspect of everything that you've done here in order to facilitate going forward.
I would say we haven't completed our conversation about our goals. We did kind of review what our other goals were, but I think this one probably we want to put on our list and have a discussion about if this is a goal, how far do we want to go with it, and we may need to talk about how we would support that goal because indeed, I think it's going to take some more hours because we're certainly, we're not going to ask Tim to do it.
Why not?
Not that I don't think he would be capable of doing it, I just don't think he has the time at this point. So I think they would definitely need to have more hours in...
19 hours a week.
In the Town House, right. It sounds like, to me, this is a half, almost a halftime. We did have somebody, how many hours did, we have them for then, because that was before my time.
The grant position? Yeah, what, how many hours a week was that?
Split with the Congress.
Well, I think... We had less though, didn't we have, we had like one or two days a week.
Yeah, I thought we only had, yeah.
Each town got the same amount of dollars from the state.
Okay. Oh, gotcha.
Well, as I say, I think it's important to move forward and talk about exactly what need, what should be downloaded, and how to do that and what it might entail to accomplish that, because to let it sit isn't going to get us anywhere.
And I'd be happy to participate in other meetings and discussions and share my inputs. I mean, frankly, in terms of green communities, other people on the task force have a lot more experience with that, and Bill is one of them. I've, over my five years, tried to focus more on the other stuff, but if it, you know, so there's really a couple pieces to discussion. One is what do we need to do on green communities itself? Because that is probably as good as it gets when it comes to bringing in outside money to help us do what we're trying to do. There's just nothing else that would be nearly, I don't want to say that it's easy, it's very difficult, but everything else is even more difficult, requires matching funds and other things like that, as far as we know. But then there's a whole nother step, which is, not to get ahead of ourselves too much, but if, again, if the community wants to do this, and it's important to know that, and we want to set climate goals, then we've got a whole nother level of support, so.
So I guess, you know, getting back, getting back to the support for, you know, ours, you know, I think that it would be great if we could work with the finance department and figure out, you know, if we are doing things that are saving money year over year, we should, you know, it's probably too late for the things we've already done, right? Because we're already spending that money. I guarantee our budget never went down because of that savings.
Yes, yes.
Right? But if there's something this coming year that we're doing that we say is going to save $5,000, well, then we should be able to fund $5,000 worth of hours with zero increase to our budget. And so wherever that savings is coming from, we just have to cut that budget.
Right.
Right? And in that way, I think we can support energy savings. And I think we need to, you know, you guys are sick and tired of me hearing me say this, I think we need to be able to track this, we need to be able to say, you know, because it's really, it's great that we can see it's $120,000 a year in savings, but we actually didn't save a penny, you know, as a town. We spent the money elsewhere, and we need to be very, very good at, if we have a, if we have a group that's out there saying, "We're saving money," we should be saying, "Okay, let's go get that money. Let's go get that money back." And if we're doing that, then we can take that money, and some of it can be savings, and some of it can be used to save more money.
Yes, exactly.
Obviously, it's a diminishing return. We want to make sure that, you know, you know, we're not, we don't want to be at the point where we're saving, we're spending all of our savings, you know, just because we can. Oh, well, now we've got 20 people who are working on, you know, green communities, that obviously is not the goal. But, you know, realistic spending to be able to get to the goal and to be able to get to more savings, I think is important. The one thing that I worry a little bit about is, and I've worked for three different environmental organizations, so I'm very, very supportive of this, but I do want to make sure that the decisions we're doing, because I know that it was a big conversation we had just in the whole, in the electricity agreement, and, you know, were we going to say, were we going to tell everybody they were paying a little bit more? In the end, we decided to do that, but we weren't unanimous. And I think that it's just important that whatever we're doing is an option, that we're not doing things that are, you know, some people may be wanting to be very green, but they're, they're on, they're on the border of can they stay in Carlisle or not? And I don't want us to do anything that's going to push them over that because we, because we have this goal, so.
May I ask a question?
Okay.
Am I allowed to?
Actually, I'd prefer that you do it outside then if it's, if you're asked.
What?
Could you identify yourself first?
Yeah, my name is Mark Brittle.
Okay, all right. And you have to go to...
Are you here for the mosquito?
Yeah, no, I'm talking in my private capacity.
Okay. And you need to use the microphone.
And you need to use the microphone.
Oh, yeah. Yes.
Well, firstly, as a member of the public, may I thank Mr. Zolk for a very clear exposition? I have a couple of very quick questions. Firstly, would there be any, given that the municipal use is more or less, you've got, you've got a hold on the municipal use, but it's the domestic use which is the real worry in terms of emissions. Is there any advantage in trying to convince people to use propane? Because the electrical energy obviously does produce greenhouse gases. Now, is there, is there any known advantage to having a drive for propane use? I don't know. That's the first question. And secondly, I see from this handout that Carlisle fears particularly badly in that its per capita emission is 43% above the state average. And one might assume, is it the case that that is due to the fact that home size just happens to be in Carlisle 45% above the Massachusetts average? So is it just that we're all heating bigger homes and using the extra amount prorata? And if so, home insulation might have a profound effect, given that the homes are so big? Or perhaps encourage people to use fewer rooms?
I'll try to answer those briefly. In terms of switching to propane, probably there's a little bit of advantage compared to fuel oil, but if we want to get anywhere approaching zero emissions, the only way to do that that I'm aware of is to actually electrify, well, first of all, become more energy efficient, electrify, switch everything to electricity, and then make sure we're getting our electricity from renewable sources.
Which we are.
That's really what we need to do. And in terms of, you know, the reasons that are, I didn't get into this, it's in the attachments here, but the reason that our per capita carbon footprint in Carlisle is 40% higher than the Massachusetts average, I can say there's three things that we can say, and we can argue these all contribute. One, we make a lot more money. That's a fact, is on average. Two, our houses are a lot bigger, even if you account for the fact that we have slightly higher occupancy rates, slightly more people per household, we still have 40% more floor area per person in Carlisle than on average. And, and we drive 40% more. Well, we're in the suburbs, not in the metropolitan area.
Yeah.
So it all adds up and makes sense.
I guess.
So you made mention of the different grant opportunities and, you know, green communities is, is, you know, there's no matching funds. Is there any way to get a breakdown of, you know, the different grant opportunities that are out there? Because I think, you know, this board would probably be supportive, and I think the town would be supportive, you know, if we could leverage some funds. I mean, you see it with CPA, right? I mean, you know, three years in a row, I think FinCom came back to try to get rid of CPA. And one of the biggest things was what we can leverage those funds, you know, so we get a state match and we leverage our funds. To get a breakdown of maybe like different funding opportunities or grant opportunities and maybe we have a larger discussion, you know, maybe even a community-wide discussion, you know, which probably turns out to be about 50 people, right? But, but, you know, just people with different ideas as to, yeah, you know, this will be a big ticket item, but it can, you know, have a huge impact and it'll be huge savings over, you know, like the, like the solar panels over the, at the school, right? You know, I just, I, you know, I don't want to be, you to be discouraged or anybody to be discouraged of going after grants that have matching funds. I mean, you know, we got the complete street thing this year, $250,000, it's fantastic. You know, we had to throw a little bit in, but, you know, in the grand scheme of things, it was a huge amount of money, you know, that the town now doesn't have to spend. So, you know, I just, I don't know how many funding opportunities or other, it could be thousands, could be 10, you know, but maybe just, is there a way to summarize that for the board to just say, you know, hey, maybe this would be something that we'd be interested in going after, or this would be something?
Yeah, I mean, we'd be happy to try to do that. We haven't really done that. I mean, frankly, most of the information we have is secondhand by talking to the Sustainability Director in Concord and-
Yeah, well, I-
Picking her brain about what's out there, so.
Right.
You know, it's been more frankly just bandwidth in the volunteer team to really take the time to investigate what the opportunities might be. All I can say is that Kate Hanley, who's Concord Sustainability Director, has made it a goal of hers to bring in as much, enough grant money every year to Concord that would cover her base salary.
Yeah.
That's her goal. Now, whether she does that or not, but part of how she does-
Something to aspire to.
But part of how she does that, though, is she can apply for these grants and write in her hours-
Right, in a portion of her salary, right, which is huge.
Is matching funds.
Uh huh.
So I don't, we don't really have that information together, but what I could do is talk to Kate and get at least a little sense of it and, and give you a better idea than I can tonight.
All right, great. That's great.
I'm just joking.
Thank you very much.
I think Debbie wanted to say.
Oh. Debbie?
Sorry.
We have to, yeah.
Sorry, we're at a surprise meeting at the high school. Yeah, I just want to say there's, I really can't emphasize how important MAGIC is the Middlesex Planning Group.
Yeah.
I can't remember what the acronym is for, but they have a lot of grants and they're doing a lot of really good things. And recently, I've been the only person attending and I am the alternate alternate. So, and it really is important because that's where you can get, you find out what, you can work with other towns in getting grants. It's much easier sometimes to sort of work together to get a grant than to do independently.
I've gone a couple of times, but they were talking about other things. They were talking about transportation, for instance, when I went and, and stuff. But, yeah, we probably do need to get somebody who has the bandwidth who can go and do that. Planning Board used to go regularly. When I was a Planning Board member, I used to go to all the meetings, but Planning Board has not been going recently for whatever reasons, I don't know. So we'll have to kind of see what we can do about getting somebody to go to the magic meetings again as, as a representative of Carlisle and bring, bring back the information.
And there are other little funny grants that Massachusetts brings out, and it's just luck if you happen to, I mean, I get it through Twitter feed now because I find that's the best way of getting information. There's a really cool grant for reusing objects at the moment, so if you, you can get $5,000 and you can organize like a bike swap sale or a library of things. So you're, what the state is trying to do is get people to buy less strangely, but there's all these tiny little grants which are really cool community building grants, but it's just, again, it's a, you know, we need somebody to help write grants and do stuff like that. When they come up, we'll have a forum where you can get ideas in from the community.
Okay, thank you. We need to move along with our agenda.
Thank you.
Before we get to the appointments, can I make a suggestion? I intended to update the board on the solar project-
Yes.
In my report.
You want to do it now?
Some information from the last week. It's actually the caucus here from the Solar Working Group and others who make it, they have a couple of hours to get to that.
Excellent. Yes, because the other things are just us nattering. Jonathan, you want to come up?
Sure. Free, free capital meeting with Amoresco. So last time, I think at your last meeting, we, you know, we described that the transfer station was currently off the table, right? Since then, we've had a meeting with Amoresco to discuss the school project, okay? And at that meeting, Amoresco essentially backed out of the financials that they had promised to the town. They are allowed to do that because the request for proposals that we sent out had them, had 180-day limit on it. And because it took us so long to get through town meeting and everything, we're beyond that. So, so they gave us a new proposal. The new proposal was not as financially lucrative for the town. In fact, it was a significant reduction. The reasons that they stated for the change was that increased demand for the panels are causing the cost to rise for panels and the tariffs on steel are increasing the canopy costs. And so those two things are negatively impacting the financials. However, the, the Solar Working Group looked at what they were proposing and did not believe that what they were proposing was a good value for the town. And so the Solar Working Group would like to recommend to you that we not proceed with this, okay? The, we discussed an alternative and we discussed it with Town Council. And the alternative is essentially to go back and do a new request for proposals, limiting it to just the school parking lot. We talked about doing, doing the request just to the previous vendors that had given us information, but Town Council recommended that we not do that because we had passed the 180-day threshold and we were changing the scope.
Right.
Right? So she said that that would, you know, potentially open us up to liability from other companies who wanted to participate and couldn't. So, so Bob Clark and I have agreed to fast-track this because the financial incentives are best in 2018. And so if we want to get something going, we've got to get a company signed on and get them to be able to spend a certain percentage of the cost of it this year in order for them to apply for the 30% tax credit, okay? So with seven months effectively, starting next week, we need to really move fast as a town to get this done. So Bob Clark and I are going to take care of it. We, we're effectively back to what's the original Solar Working Group that we had under Tim. I don't know if you want to include others in that, but something to think about. Right now, it's basically Bob Clark, me, Melinda from the school committee, and Tim. And Eric Zimmerman sometimes are working on it. So if you want to add other people, that would be great. One of the things that we're going to change in the scope based on our discussion is we're going to recommend not doing the bus area at the school. The reason for that is twofold. One is it causes more logistical problems for the school. There's concerns about how the buses are going to be able to move in there and we'd have to go through all kinds of complications with site plan review to actually make that work. The second aspect to that is the increased size of the solar system by also doing the bus area pushes up the interconnection costs that Eversource would charge to the company putting it in. That effectively offsets any value that the town might get from it because basically Eversource gets the value, right?
Interesting.
So it's actually more financially advantageous to do a smaller system, which, surprising the way these things work out, but it is.
It's counterintuitive.
Exactly. So, so the, the climate change person in me says, "Let's go for the biggest system and do renewable energy," but the town person in me says, "Let's do the right thing for the town from, you know, a logistical and financial standpoint." So we're recommending, you know, that we do that. Basically, what, what Bob and I envision is in two weeks, we get the request proposal ready, two, three weeks. That would put us to mid-June. We'd send it out, have 30 days response time. That would put us to the middle of July. We figure another 30 days to bring it to you guys to make a decision, puts us to the middle of August. That means that company has basically three months in which to do a final design and get it through the planning board and the school committee, okay? So, so that's one half of it.
I just have a question.
Yep.
We've had some votes taken at town meeting. Were they dependent on Amoresco or?
They were not.
So they could be, those, those votes could be transferred to another vendor.
Exactly.
Okay, so that's, that was my nature.
Yep. Yes. When all this came up, I quick went and double-checked that. Absolutely. So, so the change in installation would not materially change, it would still be next spring and summer, right, based on when things would end up happening. So we have another ask for you guys is the interconnection process with Eversource is lengthy. It takes about three months from the time you apply until they approve it. In order to make all this work out, the company can't really start the thing until they have both an agreement from Eversource and an agreement from the town. We can actually fast-track that by doing the two in parallel. However, that means that the town of Carlisle would have to stick our necks out and basically apply for interconnect with Eversource, okay? If we apply for interconnect, we could then transfer it to whichever company we selected, okay? So, but that means that the three-month time that Eversource takes to approve something would go in parallel to us deciding which company to use, okay? Now, our estimate is that it would cost about $5,000 to do that application process, but we'd like to ask you guys to grant Tim the ability to spend up to $7,500. And in order to do that, he would, I believe the cost of the, the engineering design, which is basically just describing what the AC system would be connected to, and, and then the actual application cost is what it would end up being. Right, Tim? So what we'd do is we'd put in the request for proposals that the company who is successful at this would be required to reimburse the town on short order essentially as soon, probably as soon as they get all their building permits. They'd reimburse the town for that. And the risk, of course, is if we get back such terrible proposals that we decide to do nothing, then the town is out this money. We've got basically a year and change to use the interconnect agreement, possibly with some extensions, but, so that's, I guess, the Solar Working Group's ask for you guys today.
But the reward would be being in a different block.
The reward would be better financials for the town long-term because we would get in an earlier block and it may be that if we don't get a company signed on this year, that the financials simply don't work out next year and we would do nothing. So, and I think if we were to go serially on the two, that would probably be where we'd end up. Just imagining, you know, three-plus months for the town to go through the RFP and another three months for Eversource.
And we know there's no landfill under the school parking lot, right?
You know, I, given what little we know about Spalding Field and the 20 grand we're going to spend figuring it out, I wouldn't guarantee anything.
Yeah.
So, yeah.
So, looking at this-
So, I mean, I-
Quick questions?
I appreciate you willing to put in all the effort to fast-track this and I, I support it and I support the expenditure of the $7,500 in the hopes that it all works out.
I agree. No.
I agree.
Absolutely.
I think you have pretty strong support from this board.
Okay.
I think we need a motion.
Yes.
Is it in the?
We didn't actually prepare one.
I move that the board has selected and authorized Tim Goddard to spend up to $7,500 for the application for municipal interconnected or the interconnection agreement with Eversource.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
I assume we have the money. Now that we've just done this-
Oh, yeah.
Tim has a little slush fund and has place to find this.
I'll find it.
Yeah. And is that the same, same SPP or whatever it was that we, we had with Amoresco? There was, as I recall, there was a document that I read was that-
The PPA?
The PPA, thank you.
No, this is different.
This is different.
This is, this is different.
You'll have to read another document.
This is related to the portion that we passed at town meeting that said we're going to have to grant an easement to Eversource to let them connect this thing to the grid. It's more related to that aspect of it.
All righty.
So one other thing that Tim just reminded me of is based on the delay that we found out about at the school committee, we're also recommending that we not immediately proceed with paving because it would be silly to pave and then wreck everything. So what we're going to do is essentially defer that until we figure this out. I think that's the right thing to do. So the paving contract as it stands, we're going to probably go forward and not, not go forward with the one that went out for RFP already.
Would you redo?
And, yeah, after we figure everything out, we'll redo one later this fall or in the winter so that it is coinciding with the actual work for the solar next summer.
Good.
Okay?
Now, do we have to do something to approve the RFP?
Yeah, I don't know. Do, do they need to do anything to approve the RFP or is that just fall under the energy task force?
We'd do that when the RFP was finished, right?
Yeah.
When it's ready.
I mean, we approved it last time, I think.
Okay. That's common process.
It's going to be the same, but a smaller.
Just a smaller.
And I don't know, does the board need to do anything about the, the Amoresco backing out of this? The, the agree-
I think we'll send them a letter and say sayonara.
Would that be one of the rebidders, right?
They might be, actually. We think that with the smaller size, they might decide it's too small and not bother, so.
The question is, do we feel comfortable in not approving? Um, the question is, do we feel comfortable in not approving directly the RFP, just approving the submission, uh, the dissemination of the RFP in order to fast-track this, continue the fast-track because it has to come back to us?
I'm certainly comfortable with all the work these people have done in the past and the little great work they've done in getting previous RFPs. They're certainly competent to do this one.
Yeah, and you work.
We can.
Yeah, I mean, I, I would hate to.
We can make a commitment to get you a draft copy for your next meeting.
June 11th, so.
Yeah, that's going to be about when we're hoping to get it final, you know, wrapped up. So we can get you a draft copy that'll still need some more updates from town council by then if you want.
Okay. All right, that's fine. I just didn't want to be, I didn't want to be the bottleneck.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Um, annual appointments.
This is really good stuff.
It is. Um, I think tonight, um, we can't do all the annual appointments and we don't have all, I, I don't think we've had enough time for people to apply to a lot of these vacancies. Um, so what I would hope you guys will do is take these home and, you know, if you have a moment, look through them because a lot of them are very interesting. I think that I have a question about some of them myself, about, you know, how many members do we have on it, on the thing? What are the terms? Sometimes there's a year term and I wonder, how come we're doing a year term? Why don't we do three? Sometimes all, you know, um, anyway. So I, I'm not proposing to go through, um, the committees, although I do think we could do the annual appointments, the, um, the first list.
Page one, yeah.
I just want to point, if I may.
Yes.
You know, looking at this first one, which was a little, you know, it has the moving of the annual list, but, um, I just want to recognize the number of people who have put so much into this town for so many years, who are stepping down from various committees, either because they're moving out of town. I mean, some of these names have been, you know, before us and, you know, for such a long period of time.
Yes.
And we are, we're really losing a lot of brain trust. And I'm a little bit worried and that's why I agree with you in taking a look at these things. I'm not sure if maybe, you know, we're looking at this completely the opposite way, but, you know, maybe what we're doing is asking too much of people by having way too long an appointment period. Maybe that's scaring people away that it's a three-year term or it's a five-year term and maybe if it's a one-year term, they can say, yeah, I can do that for a year and then see if I like it. And we might be able to get, we might be able to get more, but, you know, I worry that we're burning people out and maybe we have too many committees. Maybe there's too many things that, that we're asking people to participate in and it's just, you know, dragging people too thin.
Well, if we're burning people out, it's because some of these things should be taken into town hall for. Best example is our energy task force. They are doing the work of what most towns have staff for. And I think when it gets to that point, we need to get more staff help for them. I think we still need our volunteers because I think it's important for it to be, you know, the volunteer-directed, but then when it comes to doing the actual work, I think they need support. And we're going to need to find some.
Yeah, I think we just have to be careful that we don't, you know, that's expensive.
Yep.
All right. Yeah, but, you know, I don't think you're going to have a succession of people who come in for a year and don't know what, you know, what a grant is or where to find one. Um, I mean, how are you going to do that? Then nothing would happen. So, um, I'm actually thinking about, um, having a work, um, committee, you know, task force, thinking about asking Mary De Alderette, the town clerks, and she's kind of the person who does the, um, introduction to the committee men, to new committee members, to look at our town committees, how they operate, how we can recruit, uh, different ways of recruiting besides just, you know, this time of year where we just, you know, put something in the mosquito and we hope to God somebody reads it and sees it and then knows what to do about it because, you know, what, what does a letter, you know, of interest supposed to look like? I mean, it's scary. Maybe we need, you know, at one point.
They'll have their name on it.
I know, that's, but they don't know that.
Somebody else can send it in.
You don't like your neighbor sending it?
This year, for some reason, in the warrant, they didn't have the little sheet, you know, where you could sign up, you know, to show your, kind of give a mini CV of what you're interested in. And even then, I'm not sure people even ever saw it and knew what to do with it, even had, had seen it. Where do you, where are we supposed to deposit this thing, you know? I think we need to have some sort of a, and I was thinking just a small group to, to look at how we reach out to people to, uh, come in, to, to volunteer for.
I agree with that. I think what I was also focused on was understanding why these people stepped down. You know, some of them, it's clear, they left town.
Yeah, Deb Belanger moved, didn't she?
You know, but, but why did they step down? Um, I know why some people step down, you know, they're burning out.
Yeah, well, I agree.
And so I'd just like to, I think it would be good to reach out and find out, you know, be honest, you know, it's kind of like a, uh, employee exit interview.
Right.
Um, what, what can we do to make this better so that this wouldn't happen?
Well, most of them are the energy task force and I think they're a little, uh.
They're out of energy?
Yeah. Where, where was that? The, the one with the wily coyote with a help sign, you know? Um, I think that's why, um, there's, you know, some of them are.
We've got a lot of vacancies.
Yeah, if, if we had like a, um, I mean, nobody would probably come, but if we had a day where, you know, we had representatives from each board at a table, you know, I mean, I really, like, 10 people would come.
Committee chair.
Well, what if you did something at Old Home Day? Um, right, where you have a booth or, I don't know what you want to call it, but, you know, you have a place that people could come.
Right, that people can come, yeah.
And ask about various committees.
That's not a bad idea.
And, you know, if you want to volunteer in town, you know, come, come talk about it at this.
Yeah.
At this booth.
Yeah.
And we get a couple of real live wires to be at the booth, you know, and, yeah.
No, I just, you know, because.
You're right, reaching out and, and making it more accessible and, and have more information about what's involved in volunteering.
Yeah, yeah. Yeah, and, you know, I mean, the volunteering piece, I, I think would be huge, but also too, you know, I, I think some people just in town are just intimidated by some of these boards, right, like Concom, right? You know, I mean, I moved into town and my neighbor, oh geez, you don't want to see Sylvia drive by, you know, and of course, I saw Sylvia drive by and I got roped into Concom for six years.
That's what he meant.
But that's the thing, it's like, you know, you, you know, some people just get scared off by the whole thing too. So, I mean, it'd be good, you know, one, to get people interested and involved, but also, two, just informational. Um, yeah, I just don't know where. Old Home Day would probably be ideal because you get a lot of people passing through, so.
Yeah.
A lot of booths, so.
I wonder if you could also, you know, um, with the mosquito, you know, how the, I think what they've done recently by going back and, and talking to young people that, you know, grew up here and now where are they now and what are they doing? I think those pieces have been terrific.
Hmm, that's true.
And I've heard lots of positive feedback. Could you take, you know, one committee at a time and maybe even just highlight one person on that committee, right? And they, I don't know what the interview is, but, you know, some kind of a good, uh, you know, promo piece, but that's got the human interest aspect from that individual that served on it for a while. Anyway, something to, right? And then you, you sort of break it down so you see, oh, yeah, this is, I could do that.
Right, yeah.
Just don't interview Luke.
Okay.
I was going to use that one on you.
So I move, I move that the Board of Selectmen vote to approve the list of annual appointments effective July 2019 as presented tonight. This is this document, right?
Yes.
This is all we're voting on right now.
That's all we're voting on.
Second.
Second. Uh, any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? That was unanimous. Okay. And then after that, I mean, I just think this is a good, as I said, um, resource and please let me know, maybe you can just, if there's something that you think we should, you know, one particular that you think we should look at carefully, just let me know. We can put it on the agenda. Um, you know, we know that, you know, for instance, we're going to be doing personnel board and, but, and I know municipal facilities wanted to talk about their thing yet again, so, um, just appreciate if you look at it.
Can I just ask a quick question about all these board vacancies? So does the Board of Selectmen play any role in trying to help any of the boards or committees, you know, look for potential members?
Like twist arms and.
They're going to have to steal from each other.
Yeah.
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 I think that the Old Home Day thing is actually a really, really good idea.
It really is too, yes. Basically, the, the committees, you know, um, the person who's leaving says, well, but I got a neighbor who I think maybe I could talk into taking my place, you know? So that's, in fact, sometimes I think, you know, you get these spots of areas that everybody's on board and there's others that are big and black because nobody knows those people. And that's not really the, the best way to run a railroad, you know? Um, so that's why I'm thinking the working group would maybe look at other towns and find out what they're doing and, um, see if they can't make a proposal, but, well, I will certainly put that, the Old Home Day into the hopper. All right. Um, moving on to, um, the liaison assignments, I brought a new copy. I had done this in color because I thought it was easier, Nathan, take that one, to, to kind of see the balance, but, um, what I've done here.
Is anything else?
Alan Brown is still the vice chair.
Alan Brown, yeah, I didn't look at this header, sorry. This was.
Something in her word processor.
Yes, okay, I just, that's the problem with continuing to use the same thing over and over again. Okay. Um, what I did was a tentative on one thing and I put what, how it was last time because it was all kind of rearranged. So you can see there's not a lot of changes. Um, you can go through them. What I would like you to do is if there's something you really object, you know, you really would prefer not to do this, particular job, let me know. I think just because I put, the reason I put one, well, we'll talk about it, one name is because I think it's important for the committees to know who their liaison to the selectmen is. When there's two, it's confusing, they don't, you know, who should they talk to? And I think it's also better for us. It might be that a second person wants to also be on it and want to go to those meetings. Right. Nobody says they can't do it. Um, I also tried to allocate jugs, um, balance out, because I think there's some committees that take more effort, or, you know, more time, I don't mean effort, it just require more time to go to all the meetings or to be the liaison than others, and I was trying to balance that equitably as well. And, uh, so, and I tried to give you as many first choices as possible.
You did a great job.
I have, I just have, uh, one question, so what, uh, it's always more than one, but, so we have departments, we have boards, we have committees, and then we have the working groups.
Yes.
Is this, is this the working group definition that leads to, it's kind of a TIM working group?
Yes.
So these are the non, so we actually can't assign anybody to this, it's TIM?
Uh, well, no, we cannot assign somebody to the group, but we certainly assign a liaison to the group.
Hmm.
So if the group had a question, uh, needed, wanted to know what the sense of.
I think that TIM is our liaison in that, because what we're doing is.
I see what you're saying.
In order for it to be a working group, we have to, we are transferring full authority over to TIM.
That's true.
And TIM is therefore our liaison.
Okay.
So I think, so I think maybe we decide some of these aren't working.
These people used to be.
Yes, I know, I know.
Okay, no, this is why this is good to go through this.
I think that, you know, we may decide some of these aren't working groups and they're actual committees, but.
Yeah. Okay.
I, I think that's the discussion and whatever stays here as a, as a working group, I think it's just, it's up to TIM.
Or whoever else the working group is. For instance, if I wanted a working group for the, um, this idea of the recruiting of membership, you know, committee membership recruiting, um, there won't be a liaison for that.
I'm not sure that you can do a working group. I think only TIM can do the working group.
But I would ask, no, I would ask Mary Alderette to have.
Ah, can we do that?
Yeah.
Anybody can. Oh, for some reason, I thought it could only be you. Okay.
Yeah. Any staff, is what I understand. Any staff.
I got lots of working groups I want you to create, Jen.
Okay, that's a good point. Um, I hadn't thought of that, so, um, we can, we'll take those off. So that's one each.
That reduces our number.
Yeah, but it's only one each. It's, that was, except for, um.
Which is, it's all the one of us who are going to be asked to be on some of these anyway, right?
Seven, eight. Luke still has eight, Nathan has seven, Barney has seven. So that gives you more than anybody else.
I would like to also know if.
You and I are tied with him.
Is willing to, uh, switch with me.
Yeah.
Department of Public Works, I'll trade you Department of Public Works for Complete Streets.
Oh, yes, and I didn't know how you wanted those. I, I just kind of.
Yeah, no, I, I definitely want Complete Streets because I've been working on it.
Okay.
Yeah.
That's fine with me.
And I think that and TSAC probably.
That, I think that's all going to be one, I thought that was all going to be one.
So I've finally written a draft charge for Complete Streets.
You're giving me DPW?
I'll send it along.
Is that a trade?
Yes.
Wait a second, wait a second, wait a second. I, I would like a department, though, that takes away my only department.
Yeah, that's, in fact, that's why I had you in there.
And I can't block a monopoly, so. Um, so my, my one thing with the departments is, um, I, I would like, and this isn't yours, Nathan, this is Kate's, I would like the police department.
Okay, the reason I took police is because I'm on the Municipal Facilities Committee and we're going to be working at the police department rebuilding this building and I'm going to be there all the time, or a lot of the time. So I figured I would just.
Yeah, I, I mean.
Put that in.
Yeah, I, well.
That's, that's, that was my thinking.
Yeah.
But if you want it, I, I can.
I guess I don't think it's bad for him to have two Board of Selectmen that he's working with all the time, you know, kind of on two different.
No, and that's the thing, and ultimately too, if you work with him from that perspective if he's got issues and he doesn't want to come to you, um, but, yeah, no, I just.
Meaner than you are, right?
What's that?
Because I'm meaner than you are.
Exactly.
Okay.
So I, yeah, I'd like to.
Luke wants that.
I'd like to sit, please.
I'm going to put you on that.
Thank you.
Um, and then that, and Nathan wants Public Works.
Yeah.
You going to give him that?
Yep.
Nathan?
He must have work in Eastside and his roads.
Yeah.
Too many bumps.
Our roads are fine.
And actually, that's sort of how I, okay, yeah.
Then the only other question I have is, with it being DPW, I was wondering what Barney would feel about household recycling, because it can be separate, it's separate, never mind. Withdraw my half question.
Okay.
Yeah, it is, yeah, okay. Well, it does make sense, though, for the two to work closely together, at least for this...
That's what I was thinking, but then I was like, well, that doesn't mean it has to be the same person.
Okay.
Yeah.
Just means we're working closely together.
Yeah. Working on different issues, really.
Well, directly related.
But it's, she's not working with DPW, she's working with household recycling.
Well, I know, but they're intimately involved with the DPW, at least for this next project.
Yeah, I still think that's probably a good, good way of going.
And we just have to work completely together.
Alan, did you have requests?
Nope, I'm all set.
You're all set.
And Gary about different things.
I want to be sure, Nathan, I've gotten, that I've understood now. Yeah, so, we have Complete Streets, we don't have paths, any paths anymore?
Yeah, is that going to go away? I mean...
What is it?
Pathways.
Pathways, I took it off because I...
It was in the list, I was...
Yeah.
Yeah, it really did, the traffic safety.
So traffic safety and commute, and Complete Streets, are those also together? I wasn't sure.
They are, but they're not. So, so the way that I'm writing the Complete Streets charge is really that it's implementation of Complete Streets projects. You know, with some ultimate proposals and, and ideas, I forget the exact charge, but, but basically, you know, forward-thinking proposals, right, that ultimately will either, you know, come to the Board of Selectmen to write grants, or, you know, we'll go to TSAC for review. It's largely the same group of people, though, so I can see maybe over the course of a year those two merging.
Well, TSAC's all town employees practically.
Yeah, pretty much, well, but that's basically, basically what Complete Streets is going to be. It's going to be Fire Chief, Police Chief, DPW. The new charge I view is a, is a committee member but non-voting. And then there's like HISCOM on it, and there's a TSAC, but a non-voting member from HISCOM, non-voting member from Pathways. And then, yeah, it was a TSAC, Board of Selectmen, TSAC, Police, Fire, DPW, and then two citizens at large.
So that's Complete Streets.
Yeah, which I think ultimately will turn into...
And there's Traffic Safety, which is also, it sounds like the same...
It's very similar, yeah.
So why can't we have them be just one, one entity?
Yeah, I think ultimately they were, they will merge into one.
Wait, how long is ultimately?
Over the course of this year, I think it'll be. It's, because right now it's just they're, they're separate, two separate, and, you know, like there are Pathways people on it, and then, yeah, TSAC.
I'm not sure it's a good idea. Complete Streets are going to be eligible for another grant?
Yeah.
Certainly that group that you've just named isn't going to write that grant.
No, right, yeah.
I mean, they did a lot of work without any of those people, or pretty much without any of those people to get that last $250,000. And they're going to be eligible again, and if we do a good job on this one, it will be in good shape for another one.
Yeah.
I think you, I think you want to keep people on that committee who, who will be able to do that.
Oh, well, no, that's the idea, so we will keep people on that, it's just there's a lot of overlap with TSAC, so it would be...
But you've got two non-voting members who are not going to be very committed.
Well, it would be, so Tim would be one.
I wonder if there's a TSAC kind of Pathways type or something combination that's working on grants and everything, and then this, this, you know, the reason for the Complete Streets, this second phase of the Complete Streets was to make sure that there were people who were focused and dedicated on implementing that grant, because it's such a short timeframe. So I wonder if there's kind of like the ongoing, hey, we've got to be doing Complete Streets grants and everything, and then there's, there's an implementation arm, or else we're just going to burn them out, because it's just going to be, it's going to be so much work to be able to do the grants and then implement, and then the grants, and then implement.
Yeah, yeah, it's just, but to Alan's point, you know, but the TSAC committee is also DPW, Police, Fire, you know, so like they're not, they aren't going to be writing grants, right, so it's going to rely heavily on the couple of members at large that are on it.
Maybe we change it.
Yeah, yeah, maybe we look at all of them and then revise.
So...
I mean, it's, I don't think, if they wind up meeting together because they have the same agenda, then being, being assigned as liaisons of both groups, we can keep both groups intact by name at least, because they may well move apart again in the future.
Yeah, and that's the thing, I think we need to, you're just to kind of figure that out, because it might be too that, you know, John and Brian don't want to show up to all these meetings, and, you know, you have a brain trust that gets together and says, "Oh, we should look at this, this, and this," and then you bring it back to, you know, the chiefs and say, "Does this make sense?" And Gary, "Does this make sense?"
Okay, so actually, I'm almost, maybe I'm wrong, but did I hear that really Traffic Safety Advisory and Complete Streets are much closer related than Pathways are, because the Pathways were the ones that, right? So we should, what if we fold Traffic Safety Advisory and Complete Streets together and keep Pathways? Because I've taken Pathways off, because I thought that one was the one that was supposed to get folded into Complete Streets.
Yeah, I think the only...
So maybe I folded the wrong two.
Yeah, I think the only thing now is, you know, we want Complete Streets to focus on the implementation piece.
I understand, we keep that.
Yeah, and I don't know how incorporating TSAC, well, I guess it's really the same people, though.
It's the same people.
Yeah.
So why, you know, it's like they're talking to, you know...
Yeah, there are a couple of different, right, because I think Planning Board, is Planning Board on TSAC? I think Planning Board and Pathways and...
What do you think if we ask both groups to come to the next meeting, we just chat this through?
And we can just ask them, that's fine, yeah.
We just chat this through.
I mean, this doesn't have to be decided tonight, but this was, again, it brings these things out, and I will pencil in Pathway, back in Pathways.
Yeah, and I can, oops, sorry.
And...
And the idea is we're not, you know, we're not trying to like change things, we're just trying to keep the number of committees low and the...
Exactly.
The commitment low for people.
Right, well, and, yes.
And make sure we're successful.
And to make sure we're successful, so, so that, and there again, it's Luke and Nathan, you are the guys that I had kind of plugged in there, because I knew you were pretty patient, passionate about, well, you sound, about getting Complete Streets done right and getting it done, so that's why I plugged you there, but...
Yeah, no, I think, I think it is incredibly important, you know, as we had talked about just a couple of months ago, is Luke, Luke taking that and running with it and...
But, and, yeah, okay, so...
So just switching, you know, DPW with him and...
And then the Complete Street Traffic Safety, neither of you are assigned yet, because we don't know what we're doing yet with that, because it, that might be one, we'll, we'll talk about this.
Yeah, but right now I'm on both, so...
Right, yeah. So we just leave it that way.
You just switched with Nathan here.
Just in case nothing changes.
Right, 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 okay, great.
Yeah, so I'll send the, the draft charges for both.
That's okay with you, and you're not on Pathways, because I took Pathways out.
Yeah.
Now, is anybody still on the list of Pathways who's here that's going to all of a sudden find out that they don't have a committee?
Good question.
Yes, there is, there's four people on Pathways. Melinda's on Complete Streets, Peter's on Complete Streets. Are all of these people on Complete Streets? Well, before we have it reported that we've eliminated Pathways...
No, we haven't eliminated it, yes.
Let's make, let's make loose Luke Pathways as well, and we'll ask all three to come in.
Yes.
And we'll try to work it out better.
Right, those three groups together would make some sense.
Yeah.
Okay.
So what I have is, just for changes, DPW will be me.
Yes.
Police Department will be Luke. Complete Streets will be Luke.
Yeah.
And that's the only changes I have.
That's it, that's it.
All right, so you're going to come off Police, right?
Yeah, I'm coming off Police.
So the only other thing with me is the Master Plan Steering Committee, I don't mind being on it.
Yeah, that...
But is there somebody that can dedicate more time or wants to dedicate more time? Because I'm, I'm happy to be on it, it's just, if somebody really wants to do it?
Oh, and the other thing I was going to ask was a BOG, you know, because that's not in here, we don't have this, you know, the BOG committee that you've been, you've been on.
Yeah, so I'm still on that, but still going.
Yeah, okay, so I'm happy to take you off of that. Is there some, and again, we don't have to decide this tonight, but would everybody please give some consideration to the long-term cap, not long-term cap, the master plan?
Yeah, I'd be interested in doing that. I, I don't have a good sense with the other things that I'm down for, Carla, public schools and CCHS.
Public schools is huge.
Library, I know, that's what I'm thinking, so, but I am very personally interested in the master plan myself, and want to participate in it just as an individual, but...
Yeah, and with the schools, since I've been the liaison for the past, what, two or three years, I mean, maybe we can, you know, you can be the outward face, I'll be, I'll be the pain in the butt behind the scenes.
Yeah, no.
But yeah, because I think, you know, we've, we talked about it before town meeting, I think there, there are going to have to be some kind of strong-ish conversations.
With the school committee, yeah.
Yeah, I'm, I'm planning on, I'm working on a joint meeting with School Committee, Planning, FinCom and us, a Saturday, hopefully all day with a facilitator kind of meeting.
We're going to pay time and a half for a Saturday?
Yes.
Right.
I'll give, no, in fact, actually, I think I'll give you double time, how's that?
Oh, even better, even better.
Because I think that we need to become a team.
Yeah.
And then, I think, so...
Yeah, no, I agree, because yeah, they're, they're going to be, and part of it is...
It's going to be a hard year.
Yeah, and part of it is, not that you're not fully capable of dealing with the school committee, I mean, I know that you are, it's just I think, like what was important with the contract discussion this year was, you know, Nathan and I were at pretty much all of those meetings, and it was just showed that it was kind of a unified force, it wasn't, it wasn't just one selectman saying, "Well..."
Right.
You know, I mean, it was, it was important to show that, look, this is what we need to do with this for the town.
Yeah. So...
All right, no, that sounds good.
So what's all that mean?
That we're going to review the master planning assignment at the next meeting, or...
You're going to be on the, I mean, nobody seems to be fighting you for it.
Thank you.
You're it.
Okay, and then, but we're saying Luke, you're going to be with the schools, right?
Yeah, I'll help you with the school, yep.
All right, so it's Barney and Luke on the schools, that's great, that's good.
Okay.
Not the high school.
Oh, no, I, I put you down first for the high...
Please don't, no, nevermind.
No, I, I have heard, I noticed you slipped that one in there, I don't think that was on my list.
You said school, I put you down for the school.
Don't think I didn't notice.
You know, we have some people here from the, the household recycling. Can we do your, did you have something on your manager's report that we could look at now, that, so they could go home?
My town administrator's report, I think we had on the agenda for June 11.
Oh, yeah.
Gary was going to come in and invite the household recycling committee to talk about the composting pilot program, but the timeline has accelerated somewhat, there's some grant funding that's available.
Yeah.
We actually have a meeting tomorrow with Black Earth, the vendor, you know, Gary and I want to talk about that. Okay, I think the good news is we're going to move up the start of the program, but it's going to require some publicity and...
Yeah, we were supposed to review the, the transfer station policy, and I just thought this is not totally off topic, and they, we do need to launch the Black Earth program before June 13th in order to be eligible for more state funding, so we're trying to have our opening on the 4th, but I think it also requires, though, that we have, I don't know if we need to authorize some spending for, or authorize you to spend...
Yeah, authorize the program, Gary's prepared to implement it, but...
Okay.
What's the cost to the town even with the grant?
The cost, I think it's, I think it's $1,250 per barrel that the Black Earth picks up.
It's $15 per barrel, including a liner, and then the line at every time, and the dollar leasing fee for the bins. Some communities actually purchase the bins, the totes, the black earth, so that's, it's not a huge amount of money to book for tote.
Are these individual totes, like for...
Sixty-four gallon totes, and you can get as many as you feel need. We have discussed starting with just two, sixty-four gallon totes that would be picked up, the contents would be picked up twice a week. And, you know, depending on how quickly it goes and how well it goes, you may need to up that. Acton's, Acton, which is what, three times the size of Carlisle, started with three totes, and within two or three months, they increased it to seven, because it took on pretty quickly, took off pretty quickly.
So, just so I, so it's, so it's, so if it, if there's a pickup twice a week, what's our weekly cost?
Sixty.
$60 a week?
Correct. For four, for four totes.
Yeah.
For four totes.
I thought you said two, two sixty-four gallon totes, but they're picked up twice a week, so it's four pickups.
Fifteen dollars a tote.
Gotcha, gotcha.
Yeah, and I think what we would need authorization for immediately is, you know, some promotional materials to go out to, to households, you know, so that people would know that it's actually happening. I think they have a press release already, you know, scheduled for the mosquito, which won't cost anything, but they're thinking they would like to produce something that would go to...
It's about $3,000 a year.
There will be a savings on tipping fees as a result of this.
It should be, you know, obviously that depends on...
Right, yes.
That should be offset by tipping fees, because we pay $70 a ton, is it?
Yes, I'm not sure when the new contract is coming on, Lon.
The end of the year, I think.
Lana, do you want to say a few things, why don't you come up to the mic?
When we first got word of the grant deadline, and we were thinking, oh, we've got to do a real major push forward with regard to outreach, and we're thinking of all kinds of things, mailers to houses, et cetera, and then thinking about it, we decided what makes the most sense at this point is what we call a soft launch, so just very, have the press release of the mosquito, tell a few folks about it, and invite them to give us feedback on how it's going, get some sandwich boards that have information about what's acceptable in the bins and not acceptable in the bins, that are right there at the bins, very large, print, et cetera, and that's going to be pretty much a permanent fixture. And also to update the website, which Dan Sculten has already done, I think Jen be prepared for submission tomorrow to update their website, so people can go to the website and access a downloadable PDF of the materials that can go in that are compostable or not compostable. So that seems to be, make the most sense in terms of the short timeframe we have, and that'll give us time to build a really good campaign of public outreach.
And so what's the launch date you envision?
June 4th, Tuesday.
Fourth, okay.
Gary said he could start yesterday, basically, but he just asked, please don't start it on a Saturday, try to start it on a Tuesday, is a slower day, makes total sense.
So how does it work? Do I have, do I, do I just have a bucket that I'm putting my compost, I'm dumping it in?
Into the...
Or am I bringing it in a bag and I'm putting my bag in there?
So, each household is free to pick out whatever kind of scraps container they want to use in their homes. Black Earth doesn't require a bag, that the stuff be bagged, however, if people want to bag the scraps just to keep their bins cleaner or neater or whatever, then they must use a certified biodegradable bag. We've included the information about what is considered, what is certified, so which bags are, would fit the requirement on the part of Black Earth. I also was going to meet with Matt at Ferns and see if he could potentially supply those bags at Ferns, it'd be a nice way to, and maybe I shouldn't have said this publicly because I haven't, I didn't have a chance to see him today, but...
Surprise.
Maybe a little pressure, I don't know, it might work, but it would be great to have those bags available, they come in all different sizes, so I know some people in town have their own backyard composting setup, like my husband and I do, but there are things that they accept at Black Earth that we don't put into our bins in the backyard, like meat, scraps and bones, et cetera, dairy. So I think it's really going to be a bonus for folks who backyard compost, as well as people who haven't for whatever reason, but don't want to contribute to solid waste.
And have you thought about doing something this Saturday at the transfer station, just to say this is going to begin on Tuesday?
One thing we could do that would be relatively inexpensive would be a flyer, I just hate to give out a lot of paper that ends up getting thrown out, but maybe we could put up, I don't know how quickly we could get some sort of a sandwich board, you know, poster situation set up, that might be a good way to do it.
Right, just put it up there.
There's one in the circle right now, you could just take it and put...
I think Luke has some extra signs that you...
Luke, are you ready? Are you ready for this?
I have quite a few signs, but anyway, yeah. I applaud the effort, I think it's great, and whatever we can do to support it, I think we should be doing.
Great, thank you very much.
It's the term of the agreement.
That hasn't been decided as far as I know.
It's pilot, we're still.
It's a month to month thing, so it's no commitment, really?
It's like assigned something longer term, but.
We'll start, start month to month and see.
Say it like that, don't say it like that.
And you can add extra totes if you need, or take, take some away if there are too many at any point, they're very flexible there, so.
That's fantastic. Where's it gonna go?
Tell your friends.
Did you say where it was gonna go?
I guess we'll figure out tomorrow where it'll be placed, but, you know, they're two big bins, so high. There isn't that much space there.
Sixty-four gallons isn't that big. Double my trash.
With solar panels on top of it.
Yeah. Okay. So, a new feature, the new feature of this, our agendas will be this review of Board of Selectmen Policy and Guidelines Review. I picked the first one, just as an example of things that we need to update, which is the, well, we had the Personnel Change Request Policy that we, we started last year, and then this other one regarding the Carlisle Recycling and Transfer Station regulations. The first page of this, and, oh, by the way, I have asked, thank you very much, I've asked Jennifer to print our packets double-sided.
Yeah, that's nice, I like that.
So that's why you'll see some things on, you know, on the back.
You have to say it first, I thought I only got every other page, but then I did eventually look on the back of the pages.
Okay. And by the way, we have, you know, we, we actually have a policy about using only recycled paper, so we'll get to that, that policy later. You'll see that the first page is, got a date at the bottom, revised by the Board of Selectmen, 10/28/92. It still has our stickers at ten bucks a piece. And then on the other side, and this wasn't even in our, I don't know where you found this, Jennifer?
I'm sorry, which one are you looking at?
I'm looking at the recycling. This is that one, okay.
Oh, you don't, you didn't get it.
Because I just.
Two thousand four.
You really did only get printed single-sided, yeah, it is.
Okay, I got, I got single-sided, yeah.
Oh, you got single-sided.
May I ask just a.
Well, Vice Chairman Brown did.
Okay.
I was just gonna ask, you know, just, it's, whether or not it would make sense for, you know, the, like, unfortunately, I'm the liaison, but does it make, does it make sense for me to go and chat with Gary about this and revise it and then come back, so that we have something that's revised?
Yeah.
For us to discuss and making sure that he's involved, since he's enforcement and everything?
I think that's part of the thing, but, but there's even a larger conversation about our policies and what format we would like to see them in, because you'll see, this particular one, for instance, looks sort of like a policy on one side, and then in two thousand and and four, there was, this, we have something that looks more like a press release. It's not a policy, really, but it was never inserted into our policy handbook, and, and yet it revised the policy. So I'd like us to talk about, you know, how we wanna handle policy and revisions and writing things.
So I can tell you, in my industry, what you do is you have, you have the policy that is kind of the fixed, really very rarely changed things, and that refers to another document that could be.
Procedures.
Procedures, or it doesn't necessarily need to be, you know, that formal, it could just be, you know, the hours of operation, you know, the most, the most current version of the hours of operation, or the most current version of, of the pricing. And then that's another document that is attached to this, so that we don't have to revise the policy, we're only revising the things that we should be changing more frequently. And I think we don't change the policy that much, because it takes so much to do that, whereas we might change the fees much more frequently.
Exactly, exactly. There's another one, for instance, which is a letter from Madonna, saying that our reimbursement rate for travel is eleven cents a mile. And then there's another in there from Madonna, for, you know, that, well, this year our reimbursement rate is going to be this, you know, and it should say.
Government rate.
Government rate, exactly.
I like the eleven cents a mile.
Yeah, right. So I agree.
Unless I'm getting reimbursed.
So I think we really would like to have policies that, as you said, generic policies, and then with the, the thing, C, Appendix A, or whatever, or second page.
I'd be happy to work on this with Gary.
So you can work on this one.
Really, I guess you have the other one, too.
Can I just point out, because I got a lot of feedback when I was campaigning at the transfer station?
Yeah.
That, now, maybe this is just anecdotal, but people were saying, you know, I notice every week people come in here and they don't have their dump sticker, and nobody's monitoring it, or I see people coming in here and dumping things into the construction bin, and I don't think they're from Carlisle, you know? So I, I don't know if, I haven't looked at this closely, whether there's a, it says with the DPW, with the help of the police station. And I have never, in the thirty-two years we've lived here, had any, and we're notoriously bad about remembering to get our sticker every year, but no one's ever come to me and said.
I've been stopped at the gate.
Yeah, but anyway, I just think.
Periodically, the police would sit there, and I'd be like, oh.
Yeah, well, good, I mean, I think that should happen more, and we should also see, see if there's anything in here that should be tightened up.
Well, I'll tell you the, I did the hazardous waste last year.
Yeah.
And there, we, we looked for stickers as they came, because they go a separate.
Yes, yes.
And there were a lot of people who didn't have stickers on their car, but when I asked them for them, they produced them.
Yeah.
They don't wanna pay for the second car, so they have one they transfer.
Exactly.
Yeah, no, I have one car where it's on, and I have one car where it's actually just up.
Yeah, well, I Scotch taped it to the windshield a couple times, but.
Yeah, so if anybody asks me for it, I have it, it has the right, it has the right license plate number on it.
It turned out only about, out of fifty cars, only about three didn't have a sticker, and they got mad when I said, then go away. But that's okay, people get mad at me all the time. But they, but the rest actually produced stickers, they just weren't on the car.
Okay, so, sorry, go ahead, go ahead.
First off, mine is properly affixed to the appropriate location in my bumper, but, but.
Mine's on the wrong side, mine's on the, on my left side when you look at the car, but it's not on the left side of my car.
Which has become the standard.
But I talked with Gary, and I talked with some of his guys, and basically, that's the reason they don't approach, it's just, you know, they've gotten some people who've just been belligerent, right?
We're not, we're not police officers.
Right, right, and, you know, I mean, it's not, not worth the hassle or the risk or anything. I know Claude, at one point, had talked about setting up a camera to tech plates, you know, and just get a number, and I think he's got that number of, and it was somewhat high of people that aren't residents, but I don't know how you actually translate that into action. You know, I mean, you have a gate or something, and that just takes forever, but, but, you know, there's probably, and it might be just a larger discussion with Gary and with, with Chief Fisher, as to how we actually enforce that. And then the other piece, too, is because we don't have a bylaw that actually enforces illegal dumping, we'd need to put something in place before we could find somebody, so we'd actually have to have a policy in place to say.
Well, so that would be something I would like to see added to this particular one, then, because.
Well, we wouldn't put a bylaw in there, but we could do a bylaw.
Or we could do a bylaw, so, see, this is why I think these are important for us to be looking at, because there's all these issues that, rather than reacting to it, we can maybe try to, you know, do the right thing. So the other thing that is, we should probably talk about the sticker fee, and, you know, it's twenty-five, the right, you know, because this didn't even say twenty-five, this was still at fifteen.
Yeah.
So.
I'll chat with Gary.
Yep.
This one, the personnel one, did, did the personnel board give feedback on this yet?
They did, there should be a red line.
There is, on the other side.
Oh, look at the back of it, okay.
I didn't realize that that was their red line, I thought that this was just our last edits.
Uh huh.
That was from the personnel board. They're also working on a form that was the company requests.
Yeah.
That, depending on what the request is, will tell the department what information they need to provide.
Okay, that would be good.
Since all the changes they made.
Kind of a roadmap.
Yeah.
Yes, that was based on the meeting last week, yeah. But they're gonna work on that separate form that, that will come with it.
Do we wanna wait for the form, or do we wanna just?
No, the form doesn't have to be part of the policy.
Yeah.
No, but I guess, we do wanna, okay. Is it gonna point for the form?
I think that we could absolutely fix the, the format here in, in the future, but I think it'd be really good to have this particular policy, so that people know, hey, these are these timelines, because they're gonna be here before we know it.
Okay, so, now, wanna make a motion?
I move that we approve the Carlisle Board of Selectmen Policy Regarding Personnel Changes, Change Request, drafted April 3rd, 2019, and as amended by the Personnel Board.
Second. Yeah, you did.
Right. My only discussion, and I'll ask for other discussions, is that we, we have at the bottom, in the footer of every one, the date of acceptance or approval.
Yep.
I don't care when it was drafted, I wanna know when was adopted. So an adopt, so I, please put an adopt date at the bottom. And, all right, any other?
You don't need my copy for this at all, right? You have everything you need to, okay.
Any other discussion?
The only thing with that is, do we wanna have August 1st as the, as the date? Sorry, I probably should have brought this up before.
That's all right, that's part of the discussion.
Yeah, just because that really only gives them July, right?
You know, but this is, these are town, town departments.
No, I know, I know.
They know what they need and what.
They have June and July.
No, July 1st, right? July 1st to August 1st. I mean, ultimately, yeah, they have from the end of time.
Life doesn't start on July 1st, right?
Well, the fiscal year starts on July 1st.
Yeah, but they can be thinking before the year starts what they're gonna need.
Right, right, but it's just, like, what happens this year.
They can have five years before that, August 1st, if they want.
Right, it tends to be more of a rolling thing, I just, I don't know, I can, I can just see that, oh, August 1st is too, you know, too soon in the year. I mean, and I think with some of these boards, we're obviously gonna talk a little more in-depth, but, but I just throw it out there, I mean, I'm, I'm fine with it at August 1st.
I had it a later date, but in our discussion before we sent you the Personnel Board, we just got, we decided to pull it back to an earlier date.
Yeah, yeah, no, that's right, I thought it was later, but, you know, but, anyway, but I'm fine with it, and that's just it, I think, you know, most of these are gonna go on for at least a year, right?
Yeah.
Well, I mean, maybe there's, just as we disseminate this, maybe there's, I just already threw it into the recycle bin, but.
Here.
Maybe there's a date, you know, as we, as we disseminate this, maybe there's a date that we say, well, that particular date this year is absolutely firm, the other ones, we're just trying to figure it out.
Right, right, yeah.
But, like, there is a date where it has to be approved, right?
Yeah.
Where is that date?
It's here, fifteen gallon, this section right in here.
No.
Ooh, the new Part K4.
What's the date that we are? I guess it is all based upon that date, so there, there isn't any flexibility.
Okay.
Withdraw my statement.
All right, so we've had a motion second, we've had some discussion, any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? That was unanimous. So that has been. Okay. Now, here we go with another thing. In 2013, so, 2012, I take it back, the town asked the Edward J. Collins Jr. Center for Public Management to do recommendations on organization and efficiency study of town hall departments. And so for tonight, what I would like to do is look at pages four and five at, at the summary of recommendations.
I saw those.
And what I would like to do is check off the ones we've done. So for instance, the first one, and Nathan, you can talk, the town should begin to develop, adopt, and implement a five-year IT strategic plan. That was done, correct?
I, I didn't realize that it said five, we did a three-year.
Three-year.
Okay.
But, but we did do.
But it was sort of, sort of kinda done, okay?
It was absolutely done, it just wasn't five years.
The question is, first of all, that was a long time ago, twelve, so now we're at nineteen.
We're one year beyond that, three years.
Well, that would have been.
Twelve would have been fifteen.
Oh, yes, I'm just saying for the plan.
Yes, yes.
That the plan, the, the three-year plan was completed four years ago.
Yes, got it, yes, yes, yes. So you think we need a new one?
I, I, I believe that we need to revise the plan that we have and update it.
Or update it, okay, so, that, so basically, what I like to do is go through here, check off what we've done, what we have not done. Of the things we've done, do we wanna do them again like this? Of the things we haven't done, is it because we didn't want to, or because we couldn't, or, and do we still wanna do them, and put this kind of, this baby to bed. So eleven was the town should capitalize on its GIS asset to a much greater degree. I think we're gonna be doing that because of our master plan, and that will be, be beginning.
I think we're also doing it because it's now a part of the MUNIS system, right?
So is it part of the MUNIS?
We integrated it, the GIS, the maps more.
With the, the page, the building department.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Yeah, so the, we assigned ownership of the system to the building department?
No.
The assessors.
To the assessors, or to a specific, well, I said, assigning ownership.
Responsibility for.
Assessors, though.
I think that was by default, I think the planning board assigned that to them several years ago, and they don't, you know, they don't really manage it, they don't really.
I think there's still a lot of work that has to go into GIS.
Yeah, there's still.
Okay, so we still need to work on.
And it's expensive.
Okay. The town should purchase and install an automated information system for the COA that will collect data related to senior attendance at programs and activities. That's done. The recreation department should acquire a software package that records critical information regarding its program participants. That's also done?
Yes.
The departments in town hall should enhance their web pages to provide residents with a wider variety of information, and in addition to, in some cases, organizing the web pages in a more user-friendly manner. We have done that.
It's in progress, yeah.
We've done, but it's a continual project.
Yes, it's, needs to continue, right? Because this is.
Twenty-two is done.
Okay, the departments located at town hall should ensure that all office hours are posted? Yes, I think that's done. The finance department should develop a financial plan that covers multiple years and evaluates the town's current and projected financial condition based on projected scenarios. That, I know, has not been done. I plan on asking Bonnie to, to work on that, and I think it's still a worthwhile thing to do, I think we have to do it. But I'm willing to listen to input if people don't agree with me.
No, sorry, can we just go back to the previous one, twenty-two that we crossed out there? It just says, further, the project team recommends that individuals be cross-trained in the basic operating elements of other departments in order to be able to assist visitors in cases in which departmental staff are absent or from their workstations.
Uh huh.
From their workstations. I mean, this is kind of a recurring thing, right?
It is.
You know, I mean, ultimately, like, CONSCOM needs more help, and Board of Health needs more help, and, you know, is it truly an hours thing, or is it, or is it more so that they just don't have the people there?
Too silo, too much silo, siloization, right?
Exactly, so, so while I, I agree that, you know, the, some of this is done.
Office hours are posted, but.
Yeah, I think we should look at cross-functionality more.
Okay.
It seems to work with a couple of departments, right? Where people, right, where people work cross-functionally, but, but I think, you know, yeah, yeah, and also, too, I think that, you know, moving forward, depending on how we wanna do some of these, you know, different personnel decisions, I think, you know, that, we, we should definitely think about that.
Okay. Board of Selectmen should assess the potential of strengthening the position of town administrator in order to consolidate daily supervision over operations and performance of staff.
So we looked into that several years ago and decided not to do it, doesn't mean we shouldn't take another look at it again?
I think we should, I definitely think we should.
Even with an administrator with as big an ego as Tim's? Are you sitting right next to me? Yeah, there you go, there you go.
Council on Aging and Recreation Department should strengthen their cash handling.
Does this mean increase the cash income?
Yes, good question, what does that mean? Well, I, I read this whole thing, I just don't remember.
If I remember correctly, I wasn't on the board then, but I do remember, because we've reviewed this every couple of years, I think, I think this was, they were throwing stuff in a box, right?
Yeah, but I think it, I think it's improvements.
Yes, but I think, I think there was just a lot of cash. Yes, exactly. Yes, exactly.
Well, do they even handle cash?
There was just a lot of cash hanging around.
And so we think...
I think that we did.
I will check on that.
I think that we did. I mean, Tim can check. I think it's, I think it's good now.
So, Tim, would you check on that?
Does RecCom even deal with, or the Rec Department, do they even deal with cash anymore? I mean, it seems like I'm always making, okay, yeah, and I'm always making a check out to the town of Carlisle.
Yeah.
For literally everything, yeah.
"The town should consider the insourcing of the payroll function that is currently performed by a third-party provider. The estimated payback of five years makes the investment attractive if the payroll software has a useful life of at least this period of time."
I disagree with this one, because I think that, you know, you're changing something from an outsourced operational cost into a staff cost with benefits. I think that's ongoing, I think this ends up costing... But have we already done it?
It was not done.
It was not done.
It was not done, yeah. Sussell and Larry at the time felt that it was not worth the investment, but...
Yeah, I think it's...
...have dramatic change in how we handle payroll.
Yeah.
Payroll is just one of those great things to have somebody else deal with.
Yep.
Okay, that's fine, so we won't do. "Analysis of organizational issues, the town should consider the consolidation of the Carlisle Council on Aging and the Recreation Department into a newly-formed Community Services Department."
Not done.
Not done. Do we think it's worthwhile thinking about?
No.
Yeah, no, no.
Because...
Because seniors don't play softball very well.
Well, but they could play pickleball and various other things. I mean, there are things that, you know, and they do, senior yoga, I mean, why couldn't it be in the...
Yeah.
I mean, council on age, well, it all depends what you want the council on aging to do. We have a lot of aging people in this town who don't either need or want the services of a council on aging. They don't want taxpayer-supported functions done for them. Now, that may not be the proper way to think about it, but in a town that, where we have limited financial capacity, we probably should not be subsidizing people who neither need nor want those kinds of services.
Well, isn't RecCom more or less self-funded?
They definitely have a budget, but I think they...
They're revolving fund, yeah.
And then you get, you know, and you get the, like, the field stuff and all that.
Yeah.
Yeah, and I think there's too big a disconnect. I think, you know, the RecCom really focuses on kids, right? You know, and until those two functions have a similar...
I think that unless we consider something about this, of getting them to work somewhat more closely together, I think the idea of a community center is going to be very hard, because it's one of the things that I kept bringing up with the community center study was, you know, talking to council on aging, have you talked to RecCom? No. But you're talking about making it a recreational facility, you have to have that discussion.
Yeah, I mean, the thing is, the council on aging has a rec...
Component.
Component.
Right.
I mean, they're doing, you know, tap dancing and this and that, and why shouldn't it be all in the same brochure for one thing, for instance?
Yeah, well, I mean, that thing that comes out, right? Yeah, that's got different things, but that's only run through RecCom, right? They don't have the COA.
It's done more for a socialization reason, not a recreation reason.
I mean, one thing we could consider, and obviously, we would need, I'm not the chair, but we would want to bring the two committees in here to talk about it. Maybe what we consider is not combining the departments, but we have the departments report to a combined committee. So rather than have a COA and a RecCom...
COA has so much broader responsibilities.
They do. They're feeding them and...
Well, maybe just do something more, in the short run, it's more asking them, I don't know how the relationship between us and them goes, but that you'd like them to meet three times a year before they're going to do their next quarter's programming or something, to discuss, you know, discuss ways to share resources or consider joint programming, I mean...
Is this something we kicked a master plan?
Uh-uh.
Okay.
I mean, it's, there's nothing keeping the Recreation Committee from having programs for seniors. That doesn't mean it ought to be part of the council on aging.
No, I'm not suggesting they be part, I'm just saying some encouragement from us to get, talk to each other.
And I think it gets back to the community center. If you want a community center, this was my message two years ago, or my message last year. If you want me to support this, you need to be working together.
Yeah, exactly.
And they never work together, and so I didn't support it.
Yeah, yeah.
Let's invite them both here and not tell the other board that the other...
They see their functions very differently.
They do, but in certain respects, you know, they aren't that different.
Oh, and also...
Well, they're horribly different.
Well...
I bet you 90% of the things that the council on aging does has nothing to do with recreation whatsoever.
That's, well, that's true. I mean...
It's a very tiny component to what they do.
But would there be interest on the part of older folks in town in having more interaction with younger people, with, you know, participating in activities together?
When you say would there be, some would be interested. The majority of people over the age of 55, if that's what, if that's where aging starts?
How about if we just, I'm fading fast, how about if we just say evaluate?
I think we need to look at it.
Yeah.
To free up some resource.
Town...
We tried for this, we shut down.
Chief Information Officer to the town reporting to the town administrator. Consider the question of the position of Chief Information Officer. What the heck is a...
Yeah, we can't afford a CIO.
No.
Yeah, yeah.
That's not the IT, that's different.
No, this was the IT position.
Well, this is an IT position.
CIO is an IT position.
Yeah.
Okay.
And, you know, we have the committee now, which we didn't have when this was done.
Right. "Town should consider the conversion of the town clerk position..." Ah, yes.
Yeah, that didn't go well.
Not done.
Not done, but I don't think, I think this would be a good time to bring it back up and try it again. We have a new town clerk who is actually...
Who has been an appointed...
Who has been an appointed town clerk and could present it, is not resistant to it. So I think we should try. And, and it's early enough in her elected...
Tenure.
Tenure, that it doesn't look like we're trying to...
But you can only do this if the town clerk comes to town meeting with you and says, this is a good...
Yeah, right.
Yes, right.
The last one was overwhelming.
Didn't work well last time, no.
Yes, yeah.
Can we not even read the next one?
Uh...
Ooh!
Yeah, let's not read the next one.
What a good idea!
It actually is not a bad idea.
It's a great idea, it's just expensive.
Well, how expensive, you know...
Elevators.
Yeah, parking.
I can give you the whole report.
Anyway, okay, never mind.
I was hired to.
One word, ADA.
"Town should identify critical managers and employees who are nearing retirement age and begin the transfer of knowledge and skills through hiring employees at lower levels to work with these individuals."
Partially done.
And this is a must-do.
Yep.
Okay, good.
And according to our own policy, we need to have a proposal by August 1.
Well, actually, maybe we should be writing a letter to the affected departments and telling them that this is what we're going to, one of our goals this year, and that they need to start working on it.
Yeah, well, I've already started the conversation with conscom, and, yeah, I mean, we need to do a Board of Health and Planning.
Okay. So I don't know if you guys want to keep this report so that you read the rest of it.
Well, I found it very interesting.
Yeah, I read it.
Yeah, I got part one.
I did, too. Great. Thank you very much for doing that with me. Town Administrator Report, let's see, we call this anything that wants to be approved, right? Yeah.
First town administrator report, the Complete Streets Working Group met in... that engaged NICH Engineering, the design and engineering contractor of the Complete Streets project, and working, still working out the scope and details of the contract specifically for if you're willing to, don't award the contract unless pending any final changes to scope and authorize the chair to sign it. I know, once again, moving on.
We don't have any, we don't have any draft of the contract?
We don't currently, because we don't have the scope.
Was this bid?
No.
So we're voting on something that we have not seen at all?
Well, you don't have to, don't have to vote on all of that. We could have the vote and bring the contract to you, but I wanted to let you know that it's in the works.
Is it slowing it down if we don't vote today?
Well, no, because they can't start work until it's a contract, so, yeah.
Well, yes, that's the answer.
But this is being recommended.
Well, we already kind of agreed to NICH last time, right?
Yeah, so we, so we...
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, I was at the meeting, thanks for remembering, thanks, appreciate that. Yeah, so we reviewed the proposals by NICH, Tech, and then Stamsky, we didn't even look at, but NICH and Tech were initially higher, so we went back to them and asked them to kind of hone in their scope, and they both came back, I think they were both around 64.5. I think Tech was a little bit higher. NICH ultimately had a few more details in there, a little bit about stormwater, and then there was something else, like, design, landscape design, and there was some other, like, little throw-in, which ultimately, you know, isn't a large, the stormwater piece is a big one, but, you know, and we had reviewed it with, so who was there? I guess it was the Complete Streets team, right?
So can I ask you why you didn't look at Stamsky?
So, a couple of reasons. One is, they were significantly lower, you know, and nobody had a good feeling about them. You know, I mean, yeah, their proposal...
Traffic engineering's really not there.
It's not there.
Yeah, yeah.
So to speak, yeah.
Yeah, no, their proposal came in, and it wasn't, it wasn't at the...
Our contracts were all based on their recommendations.
Yeah, it wasn't at the caliber of NICH or Tech, so that's why, but the cost differential was huge, that's why we asked NICH and Tech to hone it back down a little bit. Yeah, it's just, it was clear that they weren't at the same level as these two, so...
Okay.
Well, we can bring the contract back once.
You can't really start until July 1, right? Or can you?
No, you can't, because we're using Chapter 90 to fund the contract.
I see, you can.
Is there any reason to wait if we've got one firm at a price that's...
No, I think it's a solid proposal, yeah.
No, I mean, I, you know, I take Nathan's point, that, you know, approving something without...
Without seeing it, it's pretty tough, yeah.
Yeah, but ultimately, if it changed, we'd...
Oh, yeah, if it changes, yeah.
Yeah.
I think we have it by the next week.
But we haven't seen anything.
Yeah.
I think by the June 11 meeting, we'll have the actual...
Okay. Send that to us.
It's not that I don't trust Luke, but I don't.
You don't?
Well, why would you?
Okay.
All right. Also, in the packet, you have a proposal from the Friends of Center Park Task Force. I met with Alan Taylor, a couple of persons who reviewed the proposed terms of agreement with Conscom, so also review the agreement. I think the terms are acceptable. I'd recommend that we move forward with approving those terms and the management of Center Park going forward.
May I have?
Yes.
So the one thing that jumps out at me is that was, is a little bit one side, you know, I like contracts to be mutual, and what this contract says is that, you know, basically, it's valid for five years, which means, you know, we need to be providing them all the access and everything for five years, but if they decide they're unable to maintain it, they can just stop.
And it goes back to the DPW?
And it goes back to the DPW. Obviously, if they can't maintain it, they can't maintain it, but we're giving them complete control over the park with no, with no way out if something, if for some reason we would want to change that.
A shorter term, would that be acceptable, or do you want to...
Yeah, either a, either a shorter term, or it's, the agreement should be valid for five years, and in the event, the task force and friends are unable to maintain the gardens and beds, or the town were to decide to discontinue the contract, the landscape would revert, it would revert back to DPW, so just make nine mutual.
Yeah.
Yeah, okay.
So it's still a five-year contract.
Right.
But if they, this is basically, they can terminate for convenience, we need to be able to, too, if they can.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
I'm happy...
I hadn't caught that. I didn't read it that way when I read it, but you have a point.
No, I kind of read it the same way, and then part of it is, I think it's just they don't want to put all the effort in, right, and then just have them say, yeah, no thanks, you know? I don't know if there's some sort of wording that we could put in there to put their minds at ease, that, hey, we're not just going to terminate just for the heck of it.
Yeah.
You know, I can see from their perspective, like, ultimately, if it just becomes too much of a burden, and they're, you know, pouring their own resources into it, you know, they can give it back, but, you know, and ultimately, it just becomes ours again, but, and DPW maintains it again, but I don't know if that's something the council could word properly, just to...
It's just somehow make it mutual.
No, I agree, I agree completely, yeah.
Whether it's after mutual agreement, if the task force is unable to...
Maybe, maybe that's it, yeah, yeah.
Or, you know, just something like that.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
It just doesn't make it unilateral.
Yeah, I agree.
There's, there's no, there's no discussion, there's no, like, and what does it mean, unable to?
Yeah.
How do you force them?
Well, that's the whole thing, is you can't, it makes sense that it's one way for them.
For them, right, yeah.
But we should have the same.
Right, if they decide to go over there and do something completely radical, or, I mean, you know, I'm sure it's...
They're not going to, but it's a contract.
Exactly, no, exactly right, you just got to think about it.
We could just go without a contract.
Yeah, but, no, we can't, because we need that 3C. Yeah.
Yeah, just something that's mutual.
Yeah. Okay.
So you said item number three, now you recall town meeting, wanted to provide funding for remediation of the fuel, fuel release at the fire station, and the LSP's estimate of the total be between $20,000 and $75,000. They're asking now for a contract for $15,000 or $14,900, but they're still anticipating that it'll be on the lower end of the spectrum, but...
I totally disagree with this, we have to spend the 75.
Immediately.
I don't want to say, yeah.
I move that the board approve the proposed agreement, I'm going to say it before they
I move that the board approve the proposed agreement, I'm going to say it before they withdraw their proposal.
Yeah.
I move that the board approve the proposed agreement for environmental consulting services Will Clarkson Barton, Inc., for testing remediation at the Carlisle Fire Station.
All right, any, um, discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? That's unanimous.
And then, uh, the master plan, uh, RFP has been advertised, the responses are due on June twenty-eighth. Town meeting, you're supposed to fund the master plan.
I didn't have that on my-
Yeah, where is this?
Movies.
It's not on here.
Oh, okay.
It's not in ours.
No.
No, we don't have a number four.
This has the meeting schedule on the backside of your first page of your report.
You have a number four on yours?
Tim's got a number four. Tim's got the special one. The special report.
For secret number four.
It's all filler, anyway.
He's going to punch you, Nathan.
The master plan, RFP has been advertised, meeting voted to provide a hundred and sixty thousand dollars to fund the master plan.
Right.
Effort, uh, and procurement officer, I'll be putting together a committee to rank the responses that we receive and to select a consultant for the project. So, uh, there'll be two steering committee members on there, two senior board members, a FinCom member and one selectman, so the board may wish to suggest a member to be on that committee if you-
I nominated either Barbara or Luke.
Well, that's right.
Right, because we're the master planning.
Yeah. And I may, I may sit in, so if you would let me know.
Okay.
Sure, I'll do it.
All right.
Yeah. Along with Kate.
You, you will be the representative, the selectman.
Okay.
I just sit in.
Well, I have to console myself, Dan, things get-
And then, you've got the upcoming meeting scheduled, uh, two years to find out, uh, June eleventh meeting. All right, and, uh, in terms of, we're, we know the vacations, uh, some people that come down here.
So, if anybody else knows where they're-
Wanted to point out that Jen and I will be on vacation during the same week, separate vacations, but we'll be-
Wait a second.
Good thing you clarified that.
Cut yourself pretty quick, too.
Yeah.
Um, I'm gone the thirteenth of August.